All people are receiving their, their statements and there's some real wicked.
That's on our deal for today.
Yeah, I think it's on. Maybe that item seven on the agenda?
Let's keep that on the agenda for future.
Okay.
I got a feeling it's gonna be a hot topic.
Okay.
I got a call from one constituent whose property valuation went up a hundred and thirty thousand dollars in one year.
For twenty twenty-three proposed.
One, one.
Mine went up just from my point, so fifty grand.
Yeah. So that's gonna be, that's gonna be an ongoing.
Thank you, Commissioner Lookchick. Item four Sanford Behavioral Health Services Overview. Okay, I was, I was about to say.
Yeah, let's talk about that. In our commission, we want to bring up a few calls here about the cooperation, cooperation with Sanford Behavioral Health. We're following. Well, we've had a long relationship with Upper Mississippi and Sanford. Becky, both Becky and I, back in the day, we served them as Board of Directors. So we've had a, a, a strong relationship with them and how we look at the future and how we agree with mental health in, in our community. Right away, some of the collaboration we've had just to fill it. Twenty ten was when we began the CLT training with, with Upper Mississippi. They were to ask us to do that, start expensive training. They've seen in the news about the law enforcement moving more CIT. Each of these classes runs about fifty, sixty thousand dollars for the long train. And they've been able to give us some, yeah, in the past. And I've been extremely appreciative. As I said, Hope, Becky and I have been the board members, really honoring our tenure on the board. We recognize the services that the community, we're lacking. We, we developed the crisis team, that's what was first offered. It was not formalized, it was formalized, we identified the inconsistencies in our, our crisis scheme. We like funding, we like manpower, and that's where the conversations began, both for the lack of services that we're providing. One of the direct correlations to that, after the criminal justice system. Twenty thirteen and fourteen, that's when we began holding meetings with our community stakeholders. And scientific, what was needed in order to prevent, mitigate, you know, health problems occurring within the community. And in twenty fifteen, we were successful in getting a two million dollar grant appropriated. Sign developed this as a sustainable and comprehensive health program, even though Upper Mississippi was providing crisis responses, services. We did not have the services provided on a ongoing basis. Now, health collaborative was then started, the health collaborative was not only ourselves and Becky's team, David's team, but also people from the community. Stakeholders, people that were, that seemed to be always in crisis. There were some goals that were slipping through cracks and identified those, what those cracks were, we were hoping that we'd be able to plug that. So that was one of the main things we were looking at. So we created the best, we wanted to create the best for people from potential arrest. Instead of being arrested for somebody in crisis. Through that, we awarded two hundred and sixty-six thousand, six hundred and fifty, I should say, due date to board, to Upper Mississippi, and we started reacting. This facility, now this is standard behavioral health headquarters. Seventeen, after we formulated this certain onset client, act services are totally sustainable. And after the official. It's fully sustainable, the services they provide and the resources for those funding. We also worked about a hundred and fifty thousand, fifty thousand dollars to do Northwest. Indian. Native American jail, jail version program. Unfortunately, that started off and it soon happened that we got a sudden COVID and it's kind of died up by. And so it's kind of dedicated jail version program. It also, it also be a seven type five thousand dollars to support the housing for Park Place and the services they provide to behaviors, Sanford Behavioral Health. A lot of things that had been back, so to talk about that. The remaining funds are earmarked for residential crisis services, intensive residential treatment services that are received and then withdrawal management. Renovated Prime West Building. Fortunately, it's on license at this point for the resident crisis. Treatment service, withdrawal management, detox facility was supposed to be part of that. And we're being assured that by the end of this year, we should have the proper license.
That's where Susan said that it was found that we needed six beds instead of four. Originally, it would be planned on four beds for that, is that correct?
The withdrawal management.
Yes. Yeah. That came up better, board meeting, that's even close as well.
I, I have a bunch of other slides in there, but they went. Well, this is a big week that we, we wanted to address those gaps, those cracks in that. Start this pilot collaboration in the project, as we see it today, and using that five million dollars towards serving our community. They have the health crisis facilities, except for twenty eighteen, we opened up the. First program, thank you. And the first program, again, we, we provide that money for them to actually get it started, although I say remains strong. Three point six million dollars of that NIH funding was given to them. That's the board member team up with four million dollars of ARCA funds to facilitate that. And hopefully very soon.
No, it's good, it's good, Alex, I'll just go from there. I guess from my perspective, I just wanted to share a couple of things about the partnership with Upper Mississippi and with Sanford. And just to note that across the state, probably across the country, mental health and substance abuse are a hot word in every county in Minnesota. One of the things I wanted to mention, again, when I go to my statewide meetings, one of the things that's asked me frequently over the week is how we've managed to build that partnership with our local hospital. There's not very many companies that have that relationship and not many hospitals that have been in the partnership of developing the health services. That's huge. But it is. So back in the history here, what Ernie described is basically people identifying a multitude of gaps across the whole service array. So I just wanted to share a few more that we partner with Sanford. One of them is a crisis grant. So Sanford runs a portion of our crisis services with Bell County County, and that money flows through Bell County County Health Services. So that's a pretty big process and we staff cases and work through those bases. Mental health and adult mental health services. The crisis transportation, I think Ernie touched on, the jail, the sheriff's office actually donates a vehicle to Sanford to support some transportation of people that don't need a higher level of service. That's states, transportation for our officers, which is big. And it also is more supportive for people accessing that transportation. When I worked at Upper Mississippi, which was completely people now, it was basically suicidal, we were shut and cuffed, which isn't necessarily a friendly way to come to their next location. So we've come a long way. And it's intense when you're dealing with somebody in that situation, so it just wasn't a big fit. Ernie mentioned the ERTS, which is a big piece of the whole package. With that first two million dollars in the Park Place project, Sanford actually supplies a nurse for that project, which is huge. The first steps to helping babies, so when I first started, the opioid addiction and the effect on the baby. Sanford, Bell County County, Red Lake, and Prime West actually developed a program. Prime West gave us a one point six million dollar. Sure, or to try to prevent that problem. We currently have a first grant. That was applied for by Sanford, they partnered with us to be able to provide FTE. That, you mentioned, some upcoming things are the crisis facility, which we were a part of with the Empath for Adults, the psychiatric services, psychiatric inpatient for adults, and the Empath for Children. Sanford in the process of developing an acting for children, which is the acting for adults only in our focus. That will be a place where we've been put in services prior to person, the child in the house. So it'll be another layer step that we have. We're currently working on an MOU possibility, which is a new model of funding, and they will provide some case management. Do some stress on our case managers. Process. And in the big future, there's some things that we're looking at, that would go, of course, additional. Some additional solutions to our. A lot of our folks that get admitted ended up in an emergency room, that's not necessarily the best place for them to get service. And it's certainly not a place we want to. Not a big one. We are in the green phase of possibly a sixteen. That's the, that's the outward. And then we're working on trying to solve that withdrawal management. They can actually find that. That was a big, was a big check on that first move that meant that we wanted that locally for a whole lot of reasons. How to be patient, better service, kind of, your access to your family, all of those things. All they're gonna work through that process. The licensing for some of this stuff gets to be more than any of us. All of these services that we're describing, we have put a part money in, but they are sustainable. Party bill, I have to, the billing process. But one time money that builds and really provides a service for our whole, did not just Bell County County. And it does seem like we become more of that regional.
Becky, would you do me a favor? And I know it was in the, in the, the PowerPoint, but would you please define the acronyms ACT, ERTS, and EMPATH?
ACT is a service, many treatments, and that basically is a roundtable. So it's a team of people, psychiatrist, a nurse, health provider, substance abuse. And I think Sanford actually has.
What was the C in, in, in ACT? Community, thank you.
So basically, we provide a daily contact with the person so that they have that support on a daily basis, rather than maybe once every two weeks driving to see if their. Provide that service in a way. And provide that support and safety net for that person. And I believe their, their maximum, as I think they are certified. And then another thing that is done besides providing that service for those folks, reduce some of the case load on some of our. Working on that same model for children right now. And there's only two of those in the state, so they'll be an addition to those two. We're real. And then the ERTS is intensive rehabilitation treatment. And it's a pretty specific population of that. People have to be identified with.
Commissioners, one thing that might be helpful is there's a handout that was provided. It has all of those acronyms on it and also organizes the continuum of care from an intensity standpoint. So, thank you. Nope, it does great for the frame of reference, because there's a lot more acronyms on here too that would be important maybe for you to wanna know.
For the. For law enforcement, still, now healthy crisis control. We're conversations and how to make this happen, one of the, one of the problems that Sanford is struggling right now is to get enough crisis workers. What we're hoping for is eventually to be able to sustain a full point for our crisis team. Eventually, we're going to. With law enforcement, when they're not actively working cases that they're going to actually supply cars. Trying to tell me squad cars and squad parks. And then eventually the whole. You know, we've got the reset coordinator that the board has put money through social services at. These things all kind of come together and work together in order to provide the services. And identifying where those gaps were and where we were falling through and where we could address. Come a long way, we really, really have. And there are not a lot of communities in Minnesota that are providing the services. And there's, there's still some more out there. There's a program called the Yellow Line. That is again, this more posts of inversion program where we actually have crisis orders given opportunities in crisis instead of. Crime, instead of going to jail, entering into that version program. That's still in practice. As we drill our reset formator, I think that's, that's all part of the. I'm excited.
I'm excited too. I, I think I wanted to focus a little bit on that whole continuum here to talk about very deep end crisis services, jail, law enforcement. We also work very closely with the. Try to do prevention. I don't know if all of you have a copy of our last twelve placements, but I believe seven or eight out of the last twelve child protection programs were babies born addicted already exposed to meth. So we have big problems as a front end and as a back end. So that partnership on those grants, a lot of the people at Versa, or just addressing how we can use public health as a prevention in that system. Those are all really important processes and calls. We have more than just the mental health.
So Becky, you're bringing up a point about babies being born addicted. And I know.
Then that's the right term, by the way, babies aren't born, they're born pre school.
Okay, thank you for the correction. Well, it sounds like the terminology has changed since we first started talking about this a number of years ago. And I know that the state recently approved or settled, you know, the lawsuit with, with the pharmaceutical companies. So I'm kind of curious how that is all gonna play into, to what we do here at the county.
I guess I am hopeful, we've been talking about that in the. I don't really understand how those funds are gonna get distributed yet, or what strings are attached to those funds. But my hope is that is prevention, that we, we use those dollars to provide support, preventing support to people. One of the problems with prevention support group is not core, which sometimes is hard for people. I mean, it's there, you can grab it, but some people don't want it. But sometimes it's the people that need it the most that don't want it. It's kind of a, but any child, you can catch in the prevention mode versus the deep end mode. It's so much better for the kids and family and it's a, it's so much better for primary. So we hope to do that, that's my hope.
I guess a little bit on the lawsuit update, the settlement with the opioid manufacturers. There is current legislation to release that, those funds to the counties on a seventy-five percent, to the counties, twenty-five percent of the state basis. And that was kind of negotiated with the County Attorney's Association and the Attorney General's Office. If that does happen, the allocation to Bell County County of, I believe, one point six million dollars. And that would be unfortunately paid over eighteen years. Yeah, so it's a, it is a, it's not an intricate amount, but it's a, it's an amount that will, you'll be able to bank on, you know, for a good period of time. I think it'll just be general fund revenue though. So we'll be able to do what we want with that. I would, of course, advocate your marketing towards health in any way, as you can, but that's up to you guys eventually.
I think you can do a quick introduction, I think we have a common hour. Jarvis, walking through. Thank you.
I apologize, I had you on my schedule starting at three thirty, so.
Yeah, sorry, we were trying to be here right at three thirty. So, good afternoon, everyone. We're happy to be back today. Again, if you don't remember, I'm Susan Jarvis, I'm the president and CEO of Sanford Health in Northern Minnesota. And we were here about six weeks ago, I think, doing an overall update around projects and initiatives at Sanford Health. And there were some questions that came up around behavioral health and behavioral health services. And so you invited us back to give an overview of, a more comprehensive overview of the behavioral health services that we provide at Sanford Health Northern Minnesota that we are very proud of. And really appreciative of the partnership that we have with the county. And I believe Becky and Ernie are gonna speak to that as well. So really, this is a, a story of stronger together, when you work together, can accomplish so much more. And with that, I am gonna turn it over to Jay, and he's gonna take you through some updates and some information about the services that we provide.
Thank you. So we're gonna try to do this at fifty thousand feet out of respect for your time. But if there's any questions about any particular service that you want me to drill down on, I'd be happy to do that. But also, we have to meet with any of you after the meeting more individually to talk about what we're planning for opioid money or anything else that you may want to know more about. The first slide that we brought up was kind of some highlights. Okay, thank you. There we go. So we wanted to be able to show on a timeline some of the highlights of some of the adjustments that we've made over time. And so the Upper Mississippi merge was Sanford seventeen eighteen. And then, if you can remember, the building on Fifteenth Street was not able to be used for services. So we had to transition to seventeen oh five, that was one of the first things. And then integrating staff employees, the fifty-three employees at that time. The, one of the first services that we brought online in concert with the county and the behavioral health collaborative was ERTS Crisis Center. Mobile crisis team coverage enhancements. We moved from a part-time mobile crisis team to full-time FTEs in that department, so that we could give you more of the community support for our law enforcement. Most communities have part-time employees that are outpatient therapists that cover shifts. That's what we had at the time. Since then, we've been able to recruit, and I'd say we're almost completely full in terms of mobile crisis teams. The restructuring, rebuilding of the park program is as a result of the level of addiction in the community with meth as well as opioids. And so we created a co-current program so that people could get their needs met in one program, both behavioral health and substance abuse. The in-person approach during COVID, most of the behavioral health organizations that we're aware of in the state of Minnesota deployed to virtual, which was mostly the phone and computers. We stayed in-house and made it available opportunities for our patients to decide whether they felt their needs would be best met coming into the office. And we certainly were very protective and had six feet apart, but we were one of the only behavioral health organizations that stayed and made ourselves available to our patients based on their choices. The care coordination model in twenty-one is a new method of providing services that's gonna create one access point for us. And have people with care coordinators to move through the system to be able to get all their needs met, not just behavioral health. So this will be a case management component that will work with each of our people in behavioral health, to be able to make sure that their treatment plans are getting that, and that all of their requirements are coming up. It also allows us to create greater access to care. You know, hiring a professional workforce is challenging everywhere and covering all the needs is really difficult. And so we've been able to pair of care coordinators with individuals so that people are getting a touch point, even though they may not be getting their appointment for a few weeks, but it's creating greater access. Mobile crisis, while the crisis center, I think we talked about quite a bit in terms of bringing the psychiatric emergency room on. That's a service that we know is gonna be available to our tribes as well as the county and the region. It certainly needed services in terms of the inpatient as well as the empath. Did acquisition of a better connection to behavioral clinic in Park Rapids, to be able to bring more, more services to that area, they have very little of anything. We're working on the detox unit and removing our medication system therapy to a different outpatient location. Any questions about any of that?
What's the, the green dollar symbols?
So I think each of them represented some grant dollars that were brought, that we'll reference a little bit later when I show you the amount of resources that were brought to our local community through the state. So this slide was created to be able to show the service lines that were on with the Upper Mississippi acquisition in, I believe, the darker. The lighter blue. The darker blue is to represent services that we've brought on since then. And if you think about the continuum of care being less intense to more intense, somebody struggling with maybe some depression or loss in it, you know, might need an outpatient therapy appointment. Somebody having more significant, more involved, morbid conditions, need a much, much more intense level of service, maybe the empath that we can pitch them. If you look at the continuum of care, meeting people's needs where they are, there's a left to right kind of a movement in terms of intensity. And so we just shows how many holes we were able to plug, bring additional services on during that period of time. Well, I, I'm guessing that you've heard from Becky and Ernie and all the collaboration that we've talked about. So for now, I'm just gonna skip that, but I, I, I didn't hear what they said. And so I think it's absolutely germane to speak from the Sanford position around how much we value our relationship with the community and our collaborations. We have been in full concert with law enforcement and with county health and services at every step of the way since the acquisition of Upper Mississippi. The programs and the services that we build at Sanford are a direct response to identified needs in the community. So the community's needs assessment drive our growth, trying to be, be able to meet people's needs where they are. It's not something that any one leg of our school could do in and of itself, but it's a team effect all the way across the board. And so the park program adjustment I spoke to, the co-curring program, was also in concert with drug court. And so just about everything we do has community ties in one way or another to other services, either lifting them up or enhancing them. If we create a new service line, it's usually at the request of a need in the community. So our, our work with the sheriff's department, I think, would say probably that it's doing extremely well, and it's probably a model for O County for people. So too, our mobile crisis team absolutely appreciates the role of law enforcement in ensuring that they're safe. And that's really become something that's gonna, I think there are more proofs as time goes on. But I think it's certainly the collaborative efforts and the intentional efforts that we're making in working between mobile crisis and the police department is certainly something I think that we're all gonna be proud of as time continues and in order to make. When we talked about the services, we also wanted to put it in terms of the financial contribution to the region and how services were enhanced and created through that collaborative effort. So Sanford played a role in the acquisition or gaining different dollars at times. But I wanted to start with the, the Sanford financial contribution to the region's behavioral health services. The initial investment in seventeen was really the acquisition of Upper Mississippi. And so right off the bat, paying off the mortgage and the staff and some of the things to be able to bring them in-house and make them Sanford employees at the onset was a one point five million dollar investment. The overall investment for Sanford in behavioral health, from that point to this point, has been five million dollars over collected revenues. Which means we've been running in a deficit as we've grown over the last several years. And so Sanford's investment in behavioral health is pretty evident in their contribution financially to the staff and the services in this region. When we think of the awards, this is provided with brands or service lines that we created to be able to enhance the need or meet the needs of our community. And so the CCDAC, or Certified Clinic Process, brought close to four million dollars for us to transition to a model that creates greater access. for us to transition to a model that creates greater access for our patients. So to get people in and get appointments and be able to have everybody working to the top of the license. The three point six million, you're well aware of for the crisis center. I'm wanting to identify and acknowledge the contribution that you've made as a board to the building of the new center and the Sanford contribution and the foundation. In grant dollars overall, I'm also the youth act teams, overall, to date, fourteen million dollars in resources brought to the region for behavioral health services, either enhancement or support. This slide was created to be able to show you in a more graphic way the services that we had in seventeen. Now that we'll have by the end of twenty-two, the number of jobs that were created as a result of the expansion. Starting with fifty-three employees from Upper Mississippi, at the end of this year, we'll have roughly a hundred and sixty-two. The service model is just a way of showing on a wheel that we can access the access points for services in the new model that we provide in behavioral health. Also wanted to talk a little bit about the number of people that are served over time, where we started in eighteen. Not that that's not accurate. I'm just having a hard time reading it. So I want to say roughly in eighteen, we served, we had about twenty-eight thousand encounters or appointments. By the end of this year, we'll have forty-five thousand. So you can see it's a substantial increase in terms of services and visits and the projections. And the number of adults served versus the number of children served on the right. The mobile crisis increases. And I put the mobile crisis increases in there because I wanted to show you that certainly the community's need for urgent emergent services in the form of the empath and inpatient unit and the collaboration between mobile crisis and the police department is probably going to need to be supported and enhanced by this group because the need is increasing on a time significant. And there's the outward appearance of the new crisis center that you guys helped contribute to. So I know that was pretty brief and pretty fast, but I wanted to be able to hit the highlights in terms of the revenue to the region, the number of jobs that were created as a result of it, and the number of people that were served overall from eighteen to twenty-one. Any questions about any of that or anything?
Mr. Chair, do you have a projected completion date for the new facility?
I'm hoping to open October first. And so we'll have our open house probably a month before that at least, unless you do that more than I do.
I think staffing will be important with that. Here the okay, I'm on a staff. And then it's never no timeline. So we'll get the building. The building should be July. And then there's like obviously after the end of the year.
Thank you.
I just want to make a comment about meeting monthly with the committee that we have with mental health and all the ideas that have been thrown out there and and putting them in an order of important, the the most important on down. And I've been really impressed with our partners with Sanford and with with the sheriff and with with Becky and Jeff and and our attorney, their comments is all for the need of our community. And to see this spread of where it was and where it's growing and will continue to grow is really impressive. And that's only due to the fact that people will sit down, share, and try to get as much resources as we can to this area. So it's been a really, I'm, if I hand that off to somebody, I think you'd be impressed. Thank you.
Mr. Chair, I'll just I'll piggyback on Commissioner Anderson and just say from from my vantage point, when my other, my, in my private life, I, you know, run a shelter and a day center. And over the years, we have really seen a a real a lot of collaboration happening that maybe wasn't taking place when we first opened six, seven years ago. And we see much more rapid response to people that are finding themselves in crisis. And it's just been really great to see because we see people that are really struggling. And it's great to know that now there's a not, you know, before we were really siloed. And now there is a community that we can, we can tap into to get responses. And I know that's just a subset of the whole picture, but that is one of the more extreme groups of of people. And it's just great to see the the change in resources available to us to help to help, to get help to our people. So I'm really happy and excited about the direction that things are going in the community.
Well, we're absolutely proud of our staff and the collaboration in the region and our leadership for investing in our services and truly acknowledging the need in the community for additional services as time goes on. So we just want to say it takes all of us and we appreciate your role too. Thank you for your time today.
I also wanted to add one thing. Jay deserves a lot of credit, but the the grant dollars that you saw, when you came, a lot of those dollars through the county. But the other grant dollars, the Sanford grant writing team is top-notch. And just, I think, the movement of from Upper Mississippi to Sanford and then the ability and the resources to procure those grants has been really huge for the community. And Jay's team is always looking for what's that next grant available? And and that's allowed us to add services, which have been here in the.
Any questions? All right. Thank you for for providing an update. We always look forward to seeing how we can collaborate. And it appears that everything is is working really well. So appreciate that. All right. Item number five, community health board.
Good afternoon, everybody. How are we today? I know we're a little behind schedule, so I will do my best to catch us up and get us back on track. I am Megan Hoyer. I am the public health director and Becky's gonna join me briefly here in just a moment. Very quickly, I apologize. This isn't on my agenda, but I did want to follow up Commissioner Gosvik with your email that you sent me just to follow up on where we're at with T twenty-one. And you are correct, it did go federal after Beltrami County. So Beltrami County voted and then the state. And then it did pass federally in December of that same year, twenty nineteen, and is still in place today. It is. Yeah. It'll be interesting to see. We'll do another round of used tobacco survey this year. And so we haven't done one since, or the Minnesota, Minnesota hasn't done one since T twenty-one went into effect. So it'll be interesting to see what sort of results come out of that if we see a bigger impact. So more to come.
That'd be nice.
Yeah, absolutely. When when that pops around, I'll make sure to bring that back because I think that'll be interesting to follow up. So thank you for your email. I appreciate it. The other thing I wanted to talk about, I have brought forward a couple of times, our new grant opportunity that we have with Sanford right now, our HERSA grant with our rural maternal health, so really looking at some of our at-risk moms and trying to get them not only medical services, but also from our standpoint, some family home visiting services, some kind of intense education and skill building and access to resources, really to help them be successful. And so I wanted to bring that back. We've seen a lot of planning this first few months and we're starting to see a better framework of what that will look like from our standpoint. Our health partners Sanford, Red Lake IHS, Caslake IHS, and Scenic Rivers are all going to see an additional staff in the form of a high-risk care coordinator. We are going to see a staff in the form of another family home visitor, if we can find the staff. But that will be our role and so really to help coordinate across all care platforms. So right from when, hopefully, we'll get them before their delivery, even when they're in the clinic. But certainly, once they deliver baby to get even right into the hospital before they're discharged, do that very warm handoff, help with some good education, really want to support. We're all at a staffing capacity that we don't know how to handle. So we want to try to weave those services in as much as possible and help with some of Sanford's capacity. They can help with some of ours. So we're really looking for an exciting partnership. Looking for opportunities. We recognize that transportation is one of our biggest challenges in our area. And so are there ways that we can help facilitate some more telehealth visits so that they can still have access to healthcare, but maybe minimize that transportation challenge? So looking forward to what that looks like, the potential for some prenatal groups, group sessions. We don't have that right now in the community, at least from a public health standpoint. So that's kind of exciting. So really just looking at increased referrals, increased breastfeeding support, and then trying to increase some of those or decrease some of those access challenges. Looking at, hoping that this is an opportunity for us to explore a little bit more of a universal home visiting model. What does that mean? It means we would love to be able to get to every new mom that has a baby, whether they've had kids or not before. And this is one opportunity, no matter what their income level. There are always going to be needs. And so if this is one way that we can collaborate with our healthcare providers, get in, answer questions, get them set up with resources to help in that success. So more to come. We are currently in the hiring position and this segues nicely into my second sad point. We are having a challenge finding staff currently in public health between my two divisions, our managed care and our family health team. We are down five staff. One happens to be out on long-term medical leave, but we do have four openings. And so we are continuing the effort. We will be posting for this position for the third time. And I'm sure this is the time that we're going to have great success. But we're seeing challenges across the board, not just in healthcare all over. I think that we all recognize that. But we are up against places that are able to offer sign-on bonuses and have some flexibility with scheduling. So we do have a few challenges. But we're confident that we're going to find the right fit. We just are, it's a work in progress.
So Megan, you talk about sign-on bonuses. How effective are they? And and do the staff really stick around after the, you know, I mean, that's what I'd like to know. I mean, I I understand that, you know, a lot of companies and organizations are are having, you know, doing the the sign-on bonus, but are the employees really sticking around after their their bonus?
I've never taken advantage of a sign-on bonus, but I do know that I, there are usually some stipulations that come along with it. So if you stick around for six months or a year, I think a lot of times they divide up that sign-on bonus. You get so much upfront and then so much after a period of time determined by that organization after they get their sign-on bonus. So I'm not sure how. I I think that there's probably some success. Right now with medical staff, there's still, for those that are able, they can make a lot more traveling than even our local healthcare can afford to pay. So so we are seeing that challenge. So I do think that there, they do have some success, even with just the immediate staffing crisis. But long-term, I don't know that that's a tremendous solution. Then I think you'll see yourself in that same position when that bonus is received.
Mr. Chair. Megan, you mentioned about some transportation challenges. Have you been in contact at all with Naomi Carlson from HRDC and the RTCC program?
Yes, there are several groups locally that have acknowledged the transportation. Women United are working on a transportation project, HRDC. Even our partners in Prime West are working on trying to come up with a solution to help facilitate decreasing that as a barrier.
Great, thank you. I sit on that board too. And I know that's a topic that we've talked about. So I just want to make sure the dots are connected.
Absolutely, I appreciate it.
And those those groups are talking to each other too, I think. You know, they're not just working on their own. They're trying to really make sure that they're not doubling up efforts and that they're that they're getting all their arrows pointing in the same direction.
Yeah. In three years, right, we'll be able to come back and see our, how our transportation issue is. I I mean, I do think there's a, there's a lot of good work going into it right now, a lot of great ideas. And to Commissioner Anderson's point, people that are willing to sit around and have a conversation and hash out ideas, that's really where the work happens. And then I think to the last thing we have to talk about briefly, Becky.
So tonight on your consent agenda, there's a resolution to recommend Prime West as our managed care organization. I've been in the process of the procurement. It's painful, but it's getting close. We brought the SHIELD Medical Youth Care, United Health in Prime West. We're on with the program for me to review and our retail partners to review. And I'm recommending that Prime West be our managed care organization for seniors. There'll be two more coming, one for SNC and one for families and children. This is just me, so just an FYI for you.
And if there's not any questions, the last question I have for you to think about is future ideas or things that you would like me to bring to the group to educate, update, discuss. Always open to that. It's nice to have a little bit of space to be able to look at all our other good work. So.
Mr. Chair, this is a kind of a novel meeting for us. It was the first time, I think, in over two years that that you haven't said a word that I'm not gonna say.
I'm not gonna say it either.
Didn't even know what it was, but it was.
Well, if there are no topics right now, I'm sure, you know, in the next few months, we'll we'll let Tom know. So appreciate your your.
If it works for you, I can send out an email ahead of time, kind of like I did this time, just to see if anybody has anything.
Thank you.
Well, I think we're back on track. So CASAT twenty project update, Bruce.
Good afternoon. I guess what I have for you is an update on the Penn State Highway twenty project. It's not the best of news, but it is a situation that we're in. The project is right now on hold. We're still waiting for two right-of-way acquisitions. The biggest one is the, on the state park. That has gone through the local review, state review, and it's out at the federal level. And that process just takes time. And we have reached out and Staubers office has helped push that along, but it's still still in that review process. We're hoping for an answer on that here soon. But that is one of the things that is holding us up. The golf course is another parcel that we have not got final acquisition right away on. We are hopeful that their month, the meeting this month, I'm not sure the date, but they would have one this month. And we're hopeful that they approve it at that meeting. If not, they'll be back in front of the board with further updates on that. And the third is we had filed for a conditional use permit with the Turtle River Township for a granular borrow source would be a new gravel pit sand. Actually, there's no rock in it, but it's sand. But we need the granular borrow for our project. And this would be on site and it would be a lot cheaper, a lot easier for us to utilize this new source. And they are in the middle of updating their ordinance. So they're wanting to wait and put this new CUP underneath their new ordinance and new conditions and that. And so that's also gonna take a little bit of time. So those three things are holding our project back. Now, there are consequences with some of those, like the state park. We need to be able to have our right-of-way so that we can get the trees cleared, the Corps of Engineers, the federal permit has restrictions on when we can clear trees. So we're not impacting the long-eared bat. So trees need to be dropped by the end of May. Or otherwise, we have to wait until after August fifteenth. And so it's kind of touchy if we can get everything in line. Yes, we're hopeful if we get that state park permit right of way, that we'll hire a separate contractor, go drop the trees. And so we're ready to move ahead with the project whenever. But with all of that in mind, I guess, we're looking to delay the project on twenty, until that August fifteenth. We're hoping everything gets lined up and in place, even if we have to start. We're hoping everything gets lined up and in place, even if we have to start clearing trees after that date. But we're hoping that everything will be lined up. We would have a start date of August 15th. So the bid letting and everything would be ahead of that time period. But we would do a late summer fall construction with a completion date of similar timeframe next year. So everything would be done before school starts, so we're not impacting school the following year. There are some positives to this. Part of the project requires a surcharge. So we need, we have a very deep swamp that we can't dig out. So we have to go through and, and slowly put material on top to consolidate that material below. And that takes time just to construct. And that takes time for that to stop settling and consolidating. And so doing that over the winter time will give us more time for that to happen. We did that on the last couple of projects out on the Seaman Highway where we did them in the fall. Took the, used the time over the winter time for it to consolidate. And then the next summer we can level it off. So that is one positive of it. Another would just be the timing of the other projects. Fifty-seven is sitting there. Schumack is sitting there gravel and would have been left with the 20 project together since they're neighboring and would have the paving together with the plan. But now if we delay 20, we have the potential of advancing or moving up the timeframe on fifty-seven. The plan is to advance another similar project, a paving project that we have next year. It'd be 12, that same, again, same area. It's a quick, simple overlay. Put that with fifty-seven, let them together and have a completion date of August 15th. So potentially fifty-seven could have sat there until the end of the season and paved with 20. Now we can have an earlier completion date. And so that project would move up. And hopefully we can stop getting some phone calls on the condition of Schumack out there. So there are some positives of delaying the project. I guess, again, wanting to combine it with 12, we'll get that project done sooner. So we're not sitting there. And then fifty-seven will extend it to next year. So again, swapping 12 and a portion of fifty-seven kind of helps even out the workload and the, and the dollars too. But I guess that's the, I guess, kind of the status update that I wanted to give you guys on those projects. Thoughts, questions, concerns?
How did the citizen input go on 20?
Well, we, that's not part of this project here. The, this project on 20 is from the state park and east. The project with the citizen input is from 21 to the state park. So it's more of the.
Then how is, why is the country club involved?
The country club has a little bit of property on the north side from the park.
Oh, so it's just a little piece, little piece of something.
It's on the east edge of their property. Yeah, a couple of holes. The property extends.
That's, I was just wondering where that line was. So the line is dividing these two projects is like almost at the end of the, of the country club's golf course that's adjacent to the 20.
Well, the line between projects is their entrance to the park, the state park.
And the country club still has some easement land up there that has to be acquired?
Yeah, again, just to the east of that, they have, there's a couple of holes.
Oh, on the north side of the road, yeah.
Yeah, they're running more north and south. We're not, it's right there. It's, the holes are off the road. They're, it's wetlands alongside the road, something right at the park entrance, but.
So, so with the swapping the projects and things like that. And we approved that the five-year plan, do we need any type of action or?
I guess I do believe so. These projects, well, we're still starting, we're still starting 20 in this year. Oh, that's the plan. So in the end, we're advancing a, a project and.
They're all approved projects.
So in my mind, I guess I, I wasn't looking for a commotion. I was looking more of concurrence or.
Nodding of heads.
I'm sure Tim, I'm sure that he would like to substitute thirty-two, but.
That's what I was trying to get at.
Yeah, I know.
I got one word for that, Schumack.
Okay.
All right, thank you, Bruce. All right.
It'll be nice to get Schumack paid, to get that finished.
All right, the 22 assessment for the 2023 taxes, Joe.
Good afternoon. Well, just an update on the assets, on kind of what's been happening. First, I just want to mention that, you know, we purchased Tyler Technology Software. And in the last year, we've been in the process of doing a conversion that is completed. And so we're up and using Tyler Technology Software. It's been a long, kind of grueling process to convert all of our data for the 30,000 taxable parcels and even the exempt parcels. A lot of individual data on each of those parcels that need to come through. And for the most part, it came across well. Obviously, there's bumps and bruises with all that. But like I said, we're up and we're using it. Tax statements were sent out based on that programming. And so were the notices this year. So it's in use and it's been going well. Also this year is our year to do exempt assessments. So we will have to revalue all the exempt property, which is done every six years. And 2022 is that sixth year. So that'll be a task we'll be working on. We've already kind of started that task, but we will continue working on that through the early part of the summer before we would start our next assessment cycle. And now for the 2022 assessment for 23 tax. You know, we, we are seeing a market that is pretty much unprecedented in my, my world. I've been doing this for over 30 years. We've had some double-digit inflationary years where we've made adjustments, you know, 10, 12, 15%. But this year, we are looking at going up real drastic. And so if we go to the, oh, this little thing right here, all right. So I covered the Tyler Technology exempt assessment. And so I think this zero could even be straight or up and down as far as the amount of change that's taken place. But housing is selling unbelievably fast. People put their property up for sale. It sells in a couple of days. Usually you have to offer more than the listing price to get it. And what all that means is it's finally circling around us. We have to look at all those sales and determine what the market has done. And that's basically about a 28% increase in residential property in a year. And that's a lot. And so in this example, we had 708 sales. Our ratio was 74.72. We need to be between 90 and 105%. I usually target more than 95%. And I don't want to be right at, right at 100. But just the 25% would put us at 93.44. 25% of 74.72 gets you to 93. And so I need a couple more percent than that to get to 95. So it's closer to 28%. But what that does is, you know, your typical property, and this isn't actually a typical property. $74,700 property would have to go to $93,400 or more just for an inflationary increase. And so, you know, when we see maybe your normal everyday property out there at 250, 300,000 nowadays, you know, they're seeing, you know, 60, $70,000 increases in one year. And that's a lot. And so those notices and valuations have been sent out. Obviously, my phone's been ringing pretty much nonstop the last two days. Wouldn't expect anything less, you know, with, with those kinds of changes. People are going to have questions. But I just want to make sure, you know, the board knows also that these kinds of changes took place out there. We needed that kind of an increase to keep pace with the market. And again, like I said, these are high, high changes, things that we haven't ever seen before. But the market has changed that much in one year that we required to make those changes. It's not just in residential property. Residential was up a little over 25%. Rural lands, 30% seasonal property over 25%. Apartments are selling for 20, 25% more than they were before. Commercial, you know, it's close to 20%. So it's, it's on all types of property. There's a little variation from one to the other. But what that means is, you know, lots of revaluations of the, of the assessed values. And so properties are seeing, property values are seeing that in their notice. When they get that and they see 25, 30%, the first thing they think is their taxes are going up 25, 30% also. And, and they're going to go up, you know, there's no doubt about that. But a lot of it has to do with, you know, the levies that are set at county levels, school district level, township levels. Typically, you know, if you have a five, six percent increase in market values, levies might be similar. They kind of follow suit. So people get a little accustomed to seeing those same adjustments in their value resulting in the same adjustment in their tax. And that, that, you know, that's true in those years. But when we do see this big of an increase, it doesn't necessarily mean I see that in their tax. And so I have been using a couple of examples just to help them kind of understand. I can come back to that one maybe, but you know, this is a pretty simple example. But you know, if you had a $4,000 operating levy and your, your homes were valued at $100,000 each, everybody would pay $1,000. If we double those values, but the levy stays the same, they still pay their $1,000 that they were paying before. And so I think it helps at least ease their mind a little bit. We're not saying their taxes are going to go up because we know we're in a time when even, you know, county budgets need to change with, you know, the inflationary costs that, you know, the county is seeing. Costs more to follow that same road than it did before with fuel costs, you know, so. So I, I'm telling those property owners that, you know, they're, they're likely to see a tax increase for sure, but it's not going to probably be similar to their value increase. And I just want to make, you know, sure the county board's aware of the message I'm putting out there. I'm not trying to blame the county board by any means, not trying to say that, you know, levies don't change. But just as an example, a 25% increase might only be single-digit increases in tax or, or maybe half of that. And so that has helped a little bit in the calls we've had. You know, hopefully those people are not going to see the same increases in their, in their tax. But that's the first place that increase goes is how much increase in tax am I going to pay? And so we'll continue to answer those questions.
Mr. Chair, is, is the, are you seeing the, the, the valuation increase being fairly uniform and around the county? I mean, you said that the average of kind of 25 to 30%. So if, if it is like your, like your slide shows, if it is that, that uniform, then it, then, then people aren't going to, individual properties aren't going to be singled out, singled out for, for massive tax hikes.
Right. And it is pretty uniform. With that being said, there's always areas that see a lot more or maybe even less. You know, when we, when we did our analysis this year of all the sales, residential, commercial apartments, land. One thing that kind of stood out to us was Lake Bemidji was kind of exceptionally on the low side. And so the ratios actually ended up being like 58% instead of 40 or 74% in northern township. And the city of Bemidji, instead of being in the seventies, where was it 66%? And it kind of actually had been something that's been on my radar for a year or two that the homes there, the values have been escalating probably more rapidly than we've been, you know, raising values. So maybe there was a little lag in our assessment. A lot of it is just the, like, properties are selling even that much better is the majority of it. But unfortunately, Lake Bemidji properties are seeing more like a 40% increase. And with that being said, with the reassessment, some could be at 30, but some could be at 50. And so that is, you know, the, one of the odd parts of the assessment. But if you look at it throughout the county, Washkish to Kellyer to, to Grigla, I mean, everybody's seeing 20-some percent increase. And 25 to 30 is, is the average that's out there. So it's a lot. You know, it's a, it's a inflationary, you know, value increase. And I guess it doesn't really help a property owner, you know, if they sell, they got to buy something else to replace it. Sell high, buy high. You're not really maybe gaining anything. But the market has certainly taken a large step upward and we've had to make some big adjustments.
So Commissioner Hooker.
Chair, Joe, yes, I think at this point, I know you still have other things to go, but what, what explains some of the pockets where, you know, the problem whenever you have this where you say, and in reference to Reed's comment, it's not completely across the board.
No.
And, and then you get XYZ talking to somebody else saying, well, mine didn't go up hardly anything, or mine actually went down. So what, what is the reason for that pocketed kind of, is it strictly based on that database of sales? And so if you didn't, if you live in an area that's not moving a lot of real estate for, for whatever reason, because the populations are stable, the people have, you know, the bigger part of that, like where I am. A lot of people have bought and sit and they're set and they're not moving around and there's no comparables. And the valuation is, hasn't changed for that reason.
There's still probably, you know, sales, some sales in that area or at least that township that are indicating those same things are happening. There really isn't any spot in the county that didn't have this effect take place. So if somebody says their value didn't go up or, you know, said that theirs didn't go up more than 5%. The only way that would have happened is if, you know, we went out and revalued it. If there was something significant about property that we reduced it for, maybe it was damage to the property or something of that nature.
Or could it have been over-assessed prior to that?
It could have been over-assessed prior, possibly. I mean, that, you know, we were going out looking at a lot of properties with this reassessment. There's people questioning that also. So it could have been brought back, but you know, if I go through the list of, and I just got these, I haven't really proofed them yet. But you know, if I go through, you know, Alaska Township, Bemidji, Benneville, Big Grass, Birch, Brook Lake, Cormet, Echoes, Elend, Throne, Grant Valley. All of these are in the 25% range era, you know, it's, it's not.
Your phone's going to be ringing off.
It already is. I got voicemails I haven't even answered because it'll be in tomorrow before I can get those. Yes. And I fully expected, you know, I mean, I didn't send these out with the expectation that this wasn't going to get people excited. But.
So my point here is, Mr. Chair and Joe, is, you know, it might be wise for us. you know, it might be wise for us to kind of hold, for lack of a better term, a, a public hearing, so to speak, and not really call it a public hearing, but could we help out by just saying, you know, if, in addition to the, when we do that, what, what, what was the date listed on your?
Like June twenty-first for the county board, but, but
before that, there's also the fact that each of the townships have their individual one. And I know when I was on the town board, that's when a number of the citizens came out and your folks were there at the meeting.
Right.
And they took care of ninety percent of the problem before it got to the county.
Yeah. And hopefully we take care of a good chunk of those before those meetings happen because we're, we're getting a lot of phone calls.
I just, I just thought there could be a way maybe that we could take care of it. Where your office isn't just getting call after call after call, if we could do a bigger kind of a gathering where we give this, what you just said.
Yeah.
Because that, you know, you're, you're saying the same thing over and over to people, right?
Pretty much, yeah.
I mean, it's not, not like in the past years when we had this occurrence, it was kind of like one particular, two, three, four, maybe ten, right, at our, at our meetings.
And we used to have, you know, a couple hundreds of phone calls, you might have a couple of thousands this year.
Right.
And maybe, maybe everybody will call, I don't know. You know, I don't know that, you know, we certainly can do something different. I'm not against that. But we also have a process in place and our office knows we're gonna get a lot of phone calls. We'll take them one at a time in order, you know, right now we're.
And maybe the process that's in place is good, like Richardson Township and then the June situation. So yeah, no use trying to fix a problem.
I don't know if there is a problem, yeah.
When are the, the township tours?
April eighteenth for three weeks, I'll be out at the border views every day, meeting with people. You know, so those meetings too, I expect to be busy, but you know, that's, that's what I do. We work through those problems.
Mr. Chair, yep. And just because their property value went up does not mean that they're gonna pay more in taxes next year.
Right.
And I, I actually have an example that actually went down by just a couple of dollars, even though the property value went up by over sixty thousand dollars. So, and, and some of the things of, you know, the school referendum not going through, your personal township might have reduced their taxes and, and so on. So it's, it doesn't mean that it definitely is going up.
They're not the same percentage. You know, if they got a thirty, forty, fifty percent increase in their value, their tax is probably gonna go up. I can't deny them that and I tell them that, but it's not gonna go up thirty, forty, fifty percent. Maybe it's ten, fifteen percent, you know, and so they're surprisingly taxpayers are very, we got good taxpayers, I think, in our company. They've been very polite, they've been understanding. You know, obviously I got a couple of people that are hot at me, but that happens every year. But for the most part, you know, it's, it's been only a day and a half of phone calls, but you know, people, people kind of know what their neighbor's property sold for and they can't believe it sold for that much. And, you know, they expected increases, but maybe they didn't expect twenty-five to thirty percent. But they're actually, you know, most people understand what's going on out there. They're more well-informed than even sometimes I, I believe. You know, they know what the neighbor property sold, they know, they know what's going on. You know, they understand the tax process, levies, you know, I started going through that and they, they lead right into it because they know what, what I'm talking about. So people are informed, a lot of them. But they just call and have questions, you know, is this for real? After they got up off the kitchen floor looking at it. And yes, it is, but they, they seem to handle it pretty well. So, you know, I think for the most part, you know, we do have a process. You know, I, yes, we're getting a lot of phone calls, but, you know, I think we'll work through that. And so, you know, that's the message I guess I want to, to give you. And obviously, another example, if you cut it in half, it would possibly stay the same, but, you know, right now I don't want to do anything different than before. You know, if people get ahold of you, have questions, obviously, you can say whatever you want, but have them call our office, we'll work through those questions.
I think I heard Jim today on, on chat about give out your cell phone number, so you might get some after-hours calls.
You know, but that's, that's what we do, that's what our office does, you know, I guess, call us, we'll walk you through it, we'll talk to you. You know, a lot of people are talking to everybody on my staff besides me also, so, you know, we have, you know, six people in the office that are, are busy, you know, answering those phones and taking care of your calls. So. Any particular questions you have other than that? I, it's a, it's a crazy amount of value for someone.
And Mr. Chair, for, for some people, and this doesn't, if, if you, if you have no intention of selling your home, this is a small solace. But for people that maybe are younger or, or that are moving around, I mean, this is a great way to build up equity in their home in a hurry. You know, if their valuation is going up, you know. I, I guess that's not gonna be great for everybody, but some people that will be.
And, and Reed, in regards to that, remember, we've had some of those instances where, for example, a builder will build a house, live in it for two years and not have it finished out. And then just before he sells it, puts it on the market, he'll pop in, trim it all out, cheat rock it all out and sell it to somebody. And that valuation, it takes a year or two for your office to get out and look at it. And then all of a sudden their valuation goes way up on them and they wonder why, you know, so there are, there are, there are other anomalies that happen in this whole industry. And of, of all the things that I deal with as an elected, this one has always been a little bit of a mystery. The formula and how that all works and how it, yeah, how it doesn't affect some and it does affect some and so.
And then how that ties into the levy and whether, and, and then.
I'm good at explaining it so well. And the last.
I didn't give out your cell.
And the last thing, you know, this is this year, we don't know what's gonna happen next year. You know, is it gonna continue? Is it gonna flatten out? Is this a bubble and it's gonna go back down? You know, we can only look at what's happened year to year statutorily. I have a timeframe I gotta look at. That's what the data shows for that particular year and we'll see what.
Mr. Chair, and I think that's a good point to make that you, like, because that was gonna be a question that I wanted to ask you is like, well, what if this is a bubble, but you, statutorily, you, we can't take a wait and see approach and well, we'll just see what happens in a couple of years. And then you, you have to go through the valuations like this and, and you're compelled to make these changes, right?
Yes. If I don't make the changes to get them over ninety percent, the department revenue will mandate. And for an example, I guess, you know, right for Bemidji, you know, they needed more value change than others. Well, the state comes in and does just kind of a blanket. And so it's not always as fair. And so we want to make those adjustments ourselves so we can, you know, put them in the right neighborhoods, adjust properties where they need. And so hopefully we feel we're able to do a better job of that than just a blanket covering what would happen if the department revenue overload our assessment.
All right, thanks, Joe.
Thank you.
Hey, that will bring us to the public safety answering point.
Good afternoon again, and thank you for your time. Today, we're for you with the consent agenda bill and discussion regarding some PSAP shortages that we're having. Also, hopefully to bring some bigger light and have further conversations in the future about some of the shortages we're seeing with, within law enforcement. But to take care of matters first, the consent agenda, I'm asking the board to take a look at. In this packet, there's excerpts from our personnel rules regarding those salary exempt individuals, PTO time, and also their having to use their hundred hours minimum. As you know, or that we've been suffering with some dispatch shortages as well. As of tomorrow, we're gonna be at sixty point five percent staffing level in our PSAP. And with that, to fill the gaps, we've asked Chris Muller, the EM director, he's also the forty percent dispatch supervisor for our PSAP to step up and fill the voids. But the problem that comes into play is that he is a salary exempt employee and he doesn't get the, doesn't have the ability to earn overtime. With that problem, so he's working his regular shift, he's also working PSAP shifts and sitting next to somebody who may be on overtime and earn considerably more money than he has. The other issue that is this created is that he is maxed out on his PTO time. And even though cashing it in, he's still going to not be able to get it below what is set at five hundred and forty hours by the end of this, this period of time that we're looking at this taking place. The other, the other issue we have is that he's required to take a hundred hours of PTO annually. And that's not gonna be in the books either. So three things before the board to have them consider. There's a resolution that's attached to that, that's private personnel rules for you to have a resolution, resolution for that to happen. This does have a sunset date on it, so it's not gonna be lasting forever, but we're hoping here with the, the current hires that we got going on right now, that we're gonna be able to fill these, these gaps. One thing about being a dispatcher, it takes about a full year of field training in order to become competent at the, and, and hold a chair. So I am, I'm confident that'll happen, but we're, it's difficulty trying to find people to fill those positions. Again, it's a very demanding job, very stressful job. And unfortunately, there's a lot of demand for that position out there right now in the, in the market. So we're having some problems with that. So that is before you as part of the consent agenda, but also to bring the light that, you know, some personnel problems that we've been having for quite some time. As you know, we addressed jail personnel rules or personnel problems last year. We've got some gap money that we came up with, the board came up with using some art money. We also had some money going towards retention, but that continues to be a problem across the board, not only nationally, statewide, but also here in Minnesota. Right here in our backyard that we're having these kinds of problems in all of our positions across the board. So the jail crisis, of course, as you know, we have done, we've been working on that for six months. It's been employed this, this program that we came up with. Today, we're still at only sixty-two percent staffing in our jail. By the end of the month, we should be at seventy percent staffing. And hopefully, within four months, we'll be at seventy-five percent staffing. So what we put in place is working, it's just taking quite some time to get there. In our PSAP, of course, we're down to that sixty point five percent. We do have a couple of candidates in the hopper. Right now, we're negotiating wages. And yes, we are negotiating wages. And unfortunately, that's something that we're gonna be seeing across the board. And, you know, we saw that our patrol side, the way some people didn't want to come work for us is because we just weren't going to make it worth it for them to move to Bemidji, Minnesota. And some, some things that we need to address across the board. Lot of thing, lot of information here, and I hope that we have a lot of conversation, conversation in the future about what it looks like. But I wanted to make a little note about our PSAP center. On the last page of that packet, there's a couple of graphs and I apologize for them being small for you to see. When they show up on my computer, they're really, really big. So I apologize for that, but just so you know, we did a study here starting in October, did it October, November, December, the last quarter of this year. And between nine oh one calls, law enforcement calls and non-emergency business type calls, they handled fourteen thousand three hundred and fifteen calls. The phone rang that many times. We implemented an automated, a, a more robust automated answering system to try to divert some of those calls. At least take some of the business calls off their plate so it can go directly to who they're trying to get ahold of. And we're looking at that now. We're doing a study. We started on April first. We'll do it, run it again for three months to see if that automated system has made any, any difference. One of the factors to consider is we're going into the busy season. With April, May and June, we'll be right on the beginning of that busy season, so those numbers may be skewed slightly from that as well. One of the areas we also need to look at is that we're in a contract with the city of Bemidji to provide dispatch services to them. That contract expires in not, in August of twenty twenty-three. And as you can see from the graph, the city of Bemidji and the calls for service and the business calls are one of the biggest drivers for our dispatch center. And causing a lot of, a lot of work, a lot of stress. And so we're trying to alleviate that, but something we should probably take a look at and start speaking with the city about is how we're gonna provide those services in the future. We cannot continue to maintain the current level of, with the employees we have, with the number of employees we have to handle the growth. The city is growing. Our area is growing, influx of people, all those things bring a demand and put a demand on dispatch services. And thus also it trickles down to our patrol side of things. It also has an effect on what our jail looks like and the number of people in our jail. Exorbitantly, numbers that do not make any sense to what our population is. But it's a factor that we've been dealing with for a very, very long time. Just to shed a little bit of light from what we're seeing on our patrol side of things. We're staffed at twenty deputies, four sergeants to control those, those four teams. Since July of last year, we've lost six deputies. One not included in there has been a long-term deployment with the Army National Guard, three retired early. Three retired early. We had two personnel related and one wanted to be part-time. Again, we hear so much about people needing to start side gigs and that's what he wanted to do. And so we don't have part-time available. Remember back in years past with our budget meetings, with a lot of tenacity, I fought to get full-time positions. Even though they're part-time, they say part-time because we kind of moved them where they need to be, but they're budgeted as full-time employees and I, I just can't give up a full-time employee for a part-time, so. It, that wasn't gonna happen and that's why he chose to leave, but it creates a problem. And we're handling that problem. We just have gone through and, and we'll be doing, conducting interviews shortly, but to kind of shed the light on some of the problems that not only we're having here, but statewide, we have two open positions right now. We had seven applications. Only three of them were qualified to be entered. The city of Bemidji's got two openings right now. They spent a considerable amount of money, I'm told, down in some targeted advertising in the metro. For those two positions, they got eleven applications. I don't know how many of those are eligible or not, but it's something that we need to look at. Something that you as a future board and a future sheriff will be looking at is how are we going to attract talent? How are we going to retain talent? Are we gonna continue to keep our community safe? Those are big questions. How is it gonna get paid? Just got done listening to our assessor talk about what is happening to property taxes and you're gonna be hearing about it pretty soon. You're gonna have to be making some tough decisions when it comes to levy dollars and the budget coming up. Very, very tough decisions, but for the workforce, we need to be more competitive with the private market. We're not doing that. One of you asked our county nurse about incentive pay. And there are a lot of agencies right now that are way ahead of us on the game. They're offering incentives, they're offering not only retention pay, but they're offering incentives to hire, bring people on. And we're a little behind the eight ball on that. I know that I voiced my concerns with HR and Tom Berry and they understand and we're addressing it. Unfortunately, I think our employees are, they don't like the speed of the way that, the, the speed of government and the way it works. And so it is causing them to have a lot of anguish about this, where are things gonna be? And again, are we gonna make it worth it for them to work in Beltran County? Open for questions.
I see that Chris's leg is in a brace and is that from ball and chain that you put on his desk?
Don't get too far away from the desk. You know, and one of the things about that his position, sixty percent EM, forty percent dispatch supervisor. And right now he's working a hundred percent dispatch supervisor and a hundred percent EM. Something's gotta get. I just knock on wood that his expertise isn't needed here as we go into the spring storm season. Even though it's national weather awareness, we've, if you know that or not, but hopefully shedding light on what people need to be aware of with our weather and what it, in fact, we can have. So he's working that as well at that point. We have a team lead, we have two teammates. One of them has remained unfilled for. One of them has remained unfilled for a very, very long time. And why do they want, not want to fill it? Why do they not want to step up? Well, because they're the first ones that are being asked to step up when we have problems. People calling sick, we have vacancies, we don't get them filled. But the extra work that comes with it. The assignment that they get is being a teammate. Again, it's, it's not worth it. They don't want to take it on. They would rather just be a dispatcher, even that's even too much. And I hate to call them just dispatchers. But a lot of people look at them just as dispatchers, but they are communication, telecommunications. They handle, they have a great, great, great. Huge role in what we do in law enforcement, provide safety to our community. They are some really, really great and talented people that have gone through a lot of training. And I hate to see them walk out the door because. We're not able to provide for them.
In all seriousness, I sit on the emergency communications board and Chris is a, is a major leader in that group as well. And we certainly appreciate everything that he contributes there and to all the other hats city wears and. And so I really appreciate Chris.
When you look at Northwest Minnesota. He is the go to guy when it comes to E M and radio stuff. He's been doing it a very long time and his talents are, are very respected amongst our, our neighbors. And I appreciate everything he does. Again, hopefully he wants to stay working with us and we don't push him out either because we're demanding too much of him.
Sheriff. You know. I believe you make a great case for, for Mr. Mower. And I believe you may be speaking to the choir when, when. You talk about, you know, all the great work that, that he provides for, for Beltrami County, you know, not only Beltrami County, but you know, the. The Northwest region, you know. As, as I travel throughout the state, you know, different meetings and, and things like that, you know. I'm often. Told about all the great work that, that Chris does. So, you know, I, I have, you know, no, no. No thoughts about, you know, offering him, you know, the, the compensation, but I do have, you know, some concerns. You know, about maybe. The, the people that, you know, work in dispatch or things like that. Do they receive overly, our overtime pay?
They get overtime. They get lots of overtime.
Okay.
They are on schedule mandatory overtime for all of them right now.
So, so what's. Yeah, so I mean, that kind of brings, brings up a, a, a point that I have is, is. What are we doing, you know, for the product, for our current dispatchers or, or. You know, communications department. Because I see you referenced, you know. Workload, stress levels, you know, I'm, so I'm trying to figure out, you know, how, how is this. Compensation going to have an impact on, on, you know, the, the workload of, of, you know, the. The dispatchers and things like that, so. You know, you know, don't get me wrong, you know, I, I, you know, I support the, you know, the, the. Compensation, but you know.
Again, we need to shed the light on what that looks like for a P S A P center. Or is busy, they are fourteen thousand calls in a three month period of time that they answered and, and with ten people. What their workload is, and I mean, this isn't just. The parking dog complaint. This is, this is saving people's lives as they're dealing with. We need to grow our dispatch center. And if I were to throw a wish list out there of what we need, and it's really not a wish list, it's a beat list. I need at least four more deputies. I need at least four more corrections officers. I need at least three more dispatchers to begin with, if not a fourth one here in the future. That's just how fast our, our community has grown. I don't know why. We're so high on the list for crimes in our area. But here again, we're number six in violent crime in Minnesota for our areas. Population wise, it makes sense. But that's what we're dealing with and we've been dealing with those same numbers. Yes, we got, I don't, I can't remember the last time we increased our dispatch staff. It'd have to go back to when we created the team lead positions was the last time we increased our staff and number in there, but. That contract with the city, the city is a major driver in the calls that our dispatch center has. And we need to address that coming up here. And there is, is areas in, within our contract that we can open that up to. Having those conversations now with them, and I think that we should start now versus waiting for that contract to expire. And then we start talking about it. But as the city grows. Again, we're the, we're a regional area that keeps drawing people to us. Whatever those things are that, that makes our community and our, our community thrive and community grow. They do come with, with cost drivers to us. Yeah.
So another question I have is, you know, I see the bullet about. This being in place for, for a year or eighteen months. Is that, is that typical or? Maybe, and have we did something like this similar in the past? How, how are we basing this decision?
But the one hundred hours is for the P T O use. That is, that goes out till twelve thirty one of twenty three. So just to get them down to where he's using that hundred hours. And a year. The five hundred and forty hours being extended to six hundred, that will expire at the end of twenty two, end of this year. So that would be the thing. Once we get to that staffing level again, this will all drop off. There was a question about. You know, maybe Chris would take all the good overtime shifts, things like that. And it is understood with our, our, our. Unions that the rank and file people will be offered overtime first before he fills overtime. So this is kind of a last resort in trying to make sure that he's whole. And we're doing every week, thing we can for the rest of our dispatchers and honestly for the rest of the sheriff's office. You know, I asked Chris, I says, when was the last time you were fully staffed? And he says it's been since before twenty sixteen was the last time they were fully staffed. I asked Calandra when the last time the jail was fully staffed. And it was well before twenty fifteen, the last time the jail was fully staffed. So we've, we've got a crisis and I've. Been trying to raise the red flag at every opportunity I get, whether it's being at a budget meeting or coming before you and. Whining and complaining like I am right now, but. We need to shed some light on this and we need to address it. We can't continue to. Kick this can down the road thinking it's going to get better. It's not. Not until we take care of what we can. And I don't even know what we do will be effective by the time we actually put it in place. Because this is growing so fast.
Well, I, I have no further questions and I guess that's my, I hope that, you know. Chris continues, you know, to do the great work that he does and, and supports his staff as well. And the dispatch and. Because I, from what I hear, it's, it's a difficult job, you know, and.
Any of you are invited to come and sit in? Just to see what happens and see how busy they are. It's no different than taking a jail tour, come and sit in their shoes for a little bit. And see what they go through. I could not beat that. I know for sure I could answer the phone, but I don't know if I could actually dispatch a call. I don't know if I would screw up the R M S system. Wouldn't be able to do that. It takes that much training to understand and have, have the ability to understand what all the resources are. At that quick of a decision, when, when you need to know who and where to send people.
How long does it take to onboard someone? And forgive me if you said that already.
Well, we have addressed that onboarding issue and, and. It's taking us at least two months to get it. We're, we're posting it for two weeks. It takes another week to get interviews done. And make tentative offers or you can't even call it tentative anymore. You invite people in the process to fill out a background. Backgrounds are getting pushed out right away. Backgrounds are taking about two weeks. That used to be a, a, a problem. It used to take us up to six weeks to get a background done. By the time we get done with that and then negotiate wages, we're looking at about two months down the road before they actually start their first day.
And then you start training.
And then we start training, yeah. So it's, it's a year. It's a good solid year that before we have somebody that is actually able to be efficient. In that chair.
Yeah, I. I'm sorry, one more question. It says it's, it's budget neutral or no impact? How is that so if, if he's going to be getting.
We don't have any people collecting salaries, so there, we're, we're actually. You know, we, we do have an overtime budget and that of course is being used, but again, we have. You know, we're, we're missing three and a half people. So.
Mine, mine too, Tim.
It's on the consent agenda. I say we move it forward as it was, as presented in the agenda bill. I'm good with that.
If we have. The situation, if you were fortunate enough to get at least two people hired. Will we still have a budget neutral with that one and a half position left or will we start, hopefully being able to back up and not overworking Chris as much?
What, when we put it down on the calendar and tried to plan things out and how, the speed of what they're going to work, hopefully. Chris, at this point will be working less and diverting his time back to working E M versus being in dispatch. But it's, again, it's still a Band-Aid to the problem.
Thank you.
And, and Ernie, as far as I'm concerned, that's an, it's a no brainer. We're, we, we need to do this. But the thing is also if anyone from you or your department has any great ideas to send to the. Negotiations and salary committee, then it's a time to do it because. We're going to start meeting and we're, we're going to deal with problems that we've had in the past and what we're trying to project for the future. And it's not just one department. And we just heard Megan today too saying the same thing. And if we turn around and looked at Linda, she'd be shaking her head also because it's all over. So we need to be creative, but we also need to. As a board, support whatever comes up. And ask good questions about why are we doing this or why are we doing that?
Absolutely, and I appreciate that comment as well, Commissioner Anderson, because we, we have been looking at that and. Our staff are, are. Really being a part of it this, this year and looking at how do we. Mitigate this as easy as possible, they, you know, and. One of the things that we've looked at in the past is who our comparables have been when we sit down negotiations and. You know, we've been on both sides of that fence of who our comparable should be, but what we really need to compare to. Are those agencies out there, not counties and. We need to be looking at agencies, law enforcement agencies across Minnesota that are comparable to us. Comparable to our demographics, comparable to our size and comparable to how busy we are. We blow everybody in Northern Minnesota and we blow most of the comparables that we've used in the past. Out of the water about how we're so busy as a law enforcement agency. How many calls for service do they handle? How many are, are each deputy required to take? How many are, how many inmates are being booked by each one of our C Os? How many times is the nine one one phone ring? And it's handled by X number of dispatchers. And that's what we need to compare. That's what we've been working on right now. And the morale side of this thing, they're, they're looking at. They want this to move faster. As much as I asked them to be patient with the process. Again, you've got a lot of scared people right now wondering what things look like. And some of them are saying if we don't offer them some help soon, they're just going to go elsewhere where they don't have to worry about it as much. They're not as busy. It's not as scary for them to go to work. So I appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you. So just a reminder that this is on the consent agenda. All right, budget process improvements. Mr. Berry.
Good afternoon, commissioners. Probably appropriate to continue the discussion on budgets. This will be a very challenging year for the county and it will be challenging for the budget committee. As well, we have eight negotiations with the unions that have to happen this year. And, and. And address all of the challenges that Ernie, Megan and many others have identified throughout the county. I'm going to focus the conversation though, however, on kind of budget processes, so. For some time, the county's been running a budget process that's worked very well. I joined the county last year. Doing the budget process for the first time and I was committed to going through the process as the county had initially developed it. But it offered also an opportunity for reflect back with the team. And identify areas that maybe we can make some improvements. So we conducted an after action review and sort of a very informal way. To identify areas that, you know, were important, things that were important to the staff in regards to how we might be able to improve the process overall. We started that discussion back in November of last year and continued it along. Through management team discussions and whatnot. And I presented for you the recommended budget process improvements in your packet for this year twenty twenty three. Almost all of these recommendations are pretty much unanimously supported by. The management team. There's one area that's not. I'll get to that in just a moment. But first, most of the stuff that we're talking about here improving budget process is really behind the scenes, internal process improvement. So they're really not going to, I think, impact the board very much or what you see on the, on the inside. Certainly, one thing that was expressed was starting the process earlier, just giving more time. For department heads and certainly the support staff to develop the information, churn and review the information. And develop their budgets. So we will try to accommodate that in an earlier start or probably start the process about a month earlier or so. With a budget kickoff meeting. We also have been a revise the budget worksheets to include more information to help. Department heads have a better view of past expenditures in the past and variations to budgets going forward. That will also help inform me better as well. And allow me to have more enlightened conversations with the department heads as we go through the budget process. Additionally, we'd like to develop a uniform, what we call case statement or budget request form. There've been a lot of questions as to, you know, how do you do this if you haven't done it for a while or what do you include in the case statement? Or some case statements are better written than others, so maybe folks are feeling like disadvantaged because of that. So we'll develop a uniform case statement that will have all the same types of information requested of department heads. That then you can look at on an even basis. Additionally. The process includes building in an opportunity for the county administrator to spend a little bit more time with department heads on their budgets. And to go through those budget worksheets with them. We also want to develop a uniform presentation format for the budget committee. Those of you who've sat on the, the budget committee. Know that the department heads do a great job in presenting their needs, but are very different in how those needs are presented. Some do a very comprehensive, take a comprehensive approach, others. Maybe not so much. So we want to standardize that as well. And, and give some expectation in regard to the format. For department heads and then also make it easier for the budget committee sort of look at all the data on a, on a even playing field as well. We also are talking about building in a review period or a conversation collaboration period with the management team. To share budgets and exchange challenges, concerns, approaches and those kinds of things. Amongst the management team with each of the different departmental budgets. That will also help to serve as an opportunity for preparing for the budget committee presentation. And also allow us to more synergistically work on issues in a better and more collaborative way. Number eight here deals with modifying the budget committee. This is the one item that I think. We're not unanimous on, I know we're not unanimous on. Two of the budget, excuse me, two of the management team members don't like this idea. All the rest of them do. So just want to stick that out there, but the idea here is that there's a recommendation to modify the budget committee. To reduce membership to include only two commissioners, the county administrator, the auditor and the finance director. As you know, that has not been the makeup in the past. We've had. Department head serve on the budget committee, two outstanding positions, you know, we helped in human services and the jail. And then one rotating department head, which then grew into two. And so four department heads are sitting on the committee and I think that's created some. Anxiety, if you will, with some of the other members of the management team who feel that. If they're not at the table, they may not have the same opportunities to make their cases. And of, as an addition. Maybe. Aren't feeling. Comfortable with the idea that other department heads are scrutinizing their budgets when they don't get the chance to do the same. So there are alternative ideas as well, which. You know, two of our members on the management team have expressed, and that is. As an elected department head, maybe there's an opportunity to have a little bit more interaction with the budget committee. And also to make sure larger budgets are, or excuse me, larger departments are represented. There is that opportunity that has been presented in the past as well. So really there's, that's the split. I think we've got what thirteen or so members that feel like, you know, reducing the budget committee. Insights. Would be good and be more balanced than, than two others do. I leave that for you to decide. I'm pretty much. Indifferent as it relates to how you'd like us to move forward to your budget process. I can work, you know, either way as you like to go forward. I think that would be an area of discussion that you probably want to have a little bit. It doesn't have to necessarily be denied. We can bring this up again and talk about it more in the future, but budget. In the future, but budget time is fast approaching and we do want to have that particular issue resolved here sooner than later. We can come back to that, but just to finish out, we do want to also get budget packets out to the budget committee sooner. So that way the budget committee can review the information and be more enlightened and prepared for the conversations that result. When we meet and then also we probably should have a good kind of kickoff meeting with the budget to make. Explain kind of the overall or background, financial and economic condition and issues and challenges that the county's facing. In the development of its new budget. We do that at the beginning of the budget process in the management team. So all the apartment heads kind of get that information and know under what circumstances are developing the budget. But we haven't done that with the budget committee. So I think that would be important to do as well. That's what I have for you in regards to improvements. I think all of them are widely supported by. The management team with the exception of the budget committee modification. So I'll stop there for questions, comments. Service might have as well.
Mr. Chair, so if, if you went with this plan, the, all of those. Management or managed managing directors, whatever, would get to still present to the budget committee or not?
Absolutely. Every single department head will continue to present to the budget committee, make their case, talk about their budgets. There are. Accomplishments for the last year, the challenge going forward, present whatever information actually be more and more uniform going forward as well. So yes, that, that, that will still.
And, and all of them, regardless of who's on the budget committee itself, they would all be working together a lot. Even more so than they currently have been ahead of time to have an even playing field. Is that what I'm hearing?
That's the goal. We're, we're, we want to have conversations as a management team. We've actually extended two of our management team meetings. In June and July, about four hour meetings so that we can work together collaboratively, building and presenting budgets to one another. And in addition, the changes that we're also making a recommendation for in having a uniform. Budget committee presentation format and also a uniform case statement format will also allow for much more consistent information to be shared by the departments.
Okay, thank you.
Well, I think, I think for. For the sake of discussion, you know, maybe we can bring, talk about this again at the next meeting. Because I also have questions about, you know, the, the process and, and, you know, I guess for, for. I would like more time, you know, because I, we only have a couple of minutes and I'm sure that a few of us would like a break before the five o'clock meeting. You know, so, so thanks for, for bringing this. Forward. I'm sure it wasn't an easy thing, you know, but I think it's something that we probably need to discuss because I have. Questions as well.
I thought we won some awards on our budget process.
I think you actually did.
I know we did. We were, we, we were commended on the budget book, the process, how it all went. So I wasn't aware there was a problem. It feels a little bit like tails wagging the dog, but I'm always up for discussion. Put it on future discussion. I'm good with that.
We can certainly do that. We have time to do that as well. So nothing needs to happen anytime immediately. But it'd be good to have this finalized sometime before May or in middle May. So. Sounds good.
Thank you.
So did you want your break or did you want?
Yeah, we'll, we'll take a break and then we'll, we'll put you on the. Regular agenda. After the public hearing. Yes, after the public hearing. All right. We're adjourned. Five o'clock. So we will begin the Beltrami County regular meeting. You can please stand for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I think next time that you hold us up, you're going to have to recite it on your own. All right, general comments from the board chair. As always, it's, it's good to see folks in a crowd. Do appreciate you taking the time to, to join us this evening. But looking outside, I can't tell if it's November or April. So. That I have no other comments. Citizens addressing the board, anyone wishing to address the county board on an item not on the agenda. May come forward at this time to be recognized by the board chair. Please state your name and address for the record. Comments are limited to five minutes. A personnel complaint against an individual county employee may not be heard initially at a board meeting. Personnel complaints may be submitted to the board in writing to the county administrator's office. A person addressing the board. May not use profanity or vulgar language. Yes. And, and I'm not too sure if you're here to speak to the board or, or for the public hearing. But the, the, we haven't got to the public hearing portion of, of the meeting yet. This is citizens addressing the board portion of the citizens addressing the board. On an issue, the, the portion that we're on for the agenda is, is citizens coming forward. To address the board on, on, on an issue that is not on the agenda. Okay, just want to clarify because we do have a, a public hearing set this, no. It's, it's your discretion. Yes.
Okay, my name is Glenn Bridgeford. I live at 12354 Mission Road Northeast. Lived there since nineteen eighty-one. And. County managed, state-owned. And the gravel pit behind south of our home. And I request. That the county close that. As soon as possible. Okay. And the second thing. We. Can't afford an attorney and we. We can't even afford a restraining order against our neighbors, but I'd like a variance on that so we could. We could get a restraining order. Against our neighbors to protect our physical and mental well-being. If that's at all possible. Okay. That it? Any questions?
No, typically during the, the citizens addressing the, the board portion of, of the meeting, there is no. Dialogue or, or back and forth. Yeah. So, so we will.
By our neighbor's actions. Be here. They asked for help. We need.
Sir, I would ask you to reach out to your county commissioner tomorrow. Give, give whichever one of us is your commissioner, give us a call tomorrow and we can talk to you about what some of your avenues might be.
I think I talked to you before.
Oh.
Yep, that's Greg Gosick. Yep, and so we can.
Still at it. And they're not gonna stop until somebody does something. I don't think I need to, I'm not, I shouldn't be in a position to. Stop and somebody else should do it, but they're not gonna stop and all that.
Thank you, Glenn. Are there any other citizens wishing to address the board this evening? If there are, are there any online? No. Okay. All right, with that, I'll ask for a motion to approve the agenda.
Mr. Chair, I'll make the motion to approve the agenda with the addition of administrator's report after the public hearing.
Is there a second?
I'll second that, Mr. Chair.
All right, we got a second by coming, a motion by Commissioner Anderson, second by Commissioner Olson. Any further discussion? Now I'll call for the vote. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose. Okay, I'll ask for a motion to approve the consent agenda.
I'll make a motion to approve the consent agenda.
A motion by Commissioner Gosberg. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Lukachik. Any further discussion? Now I'll call for the vote. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Right, motion carried on to the regular agenda. So at this time, I will open the public hearing. For the redistricting of commissioner districts.
Good afternoon, commissioners. Diane is going to get a presentation up for me. Many of you have already seen most of this presentation, but I'm going to go through it again quickly for members of the audience and anyone at home. Can see, see the presentation as well and see what, what our redistricting plan consists of at this point. So our redistricting committee is made up of county administrator Tom Berry, GIS director Kevin Trapp and myself, auditor treasurer Jody Treat. Our redistricting plan, we put in place, provide options to the commissioners. Publish and allow comment at the board meeting, redistricting hearing. The commissioners review and adopt commissioner redistricting plan. And the commissioners review and adopt unorganized township plan, which you have done at the last regular board meeting. The redistricting schedule census block data was released last fall. In January, the legislative session start, started February fifteenth. Is when the congressional and the, the state house and senate redistricting deadline was. On the twenty ninth, all townships and cities had their deadline. And then as county commissioners, your deadline is the twenty sixth of April to vote on a redistricting plan. After that point, we publish it, filings open for seats, May seventeenth. Our state primary is August ninth and general election, November eighth. So the activity timeline that we have accomplished so far. In August of last year, we created our redistricting committee. After that, in the fall, we put together a newsletter article for the Beltrami County newsletter. We also presented at the commission, just the steps and the process that we would be going through. After the first of the year, when the state released their plans on February fifteenth. On the sixteenth, then those same plans and instructions were sent out to all of the townships and cities by my office. On the first quarter, then we also published in our newsletter, the state's redistricting plans and maps that they had put together. Bringing us to March, which was a really busy month for US commissioners working through the redistricting plan. We had a board discussion in Ten Lake at our, at our first meeting in March. After that, at that meeting, you set this public hearing. So that was set at that meeting. It was published in the newspaper and on our web. It was published in the newspaper and on our website. At our last Board meeting, we covered preliminary plans based on information we gathered from you at the Tenlake, at the meeting at Tenlake Town Hall. You also passed the resolution for unorganized townships, precincts, and polling places. And then, at that last meeting, you also set a special work session for April twelfth. That has now been published in the newspaper and that will, after we have the public hearing tonight, next Tuesday, we'll have the work session where we will have software available that we can go through different scenarios live. It doesn't have to be where you give us information. We put the information together. It's a, it will be a work session that we can go through that information live. On your second, your second regular meeting in April is when you'll take action and vote on a redistricting plan. And again, the rules and guidance statutory, these are, the redistricting process is set out in state statute. They, every ten years after federal census, the boundaries are reviewed and redistricting is done if it's deemed necessary. You create the same number of districts that you have Commissioners. Each district should be as equal in population as possible. The districts must be bounded by precinct lines. The, they must be contiguous and compact and cannot vary by more than ten percent of the average population overall. After redistricting is completed, you would, you will then go through the election process to see if you want any staggering of terms for the districts that may have to run for election. The Board directives that we received at that March first meeting were to make minimal changes, make the districts more compact and even in population. I think the, the one, the situation that kept coming up is there the sea that's in our maps, to get rid of that sea, get everything more compact. No gerrymandering. And then, out of all of those requests, there were three scenarios that came up. So this is what we started with as a committee. This is the population per township, per city ward. This is how, how we have to combine different groups together to make sure that everything is compact, everything is contiguous, and using those populations to get as equal to each other as possible and not vary more than ten percent from that average. So this is the point where we are at tonight. We've gone through all of those steps and now it's time for the Commission to hear from the public. So I think if you want, I can sit up here. If there's any questions that come up, otherwise I'll just take a seat.
Yeah, well, wherever you're most comfortable. And the same rules apply, the five minutes apply to the public hearing. Okay. All right, so now that we have heard from the Auditor Treasurer, now is the time the public can, can approach the Board and give their, their public statement. Is there anybody online? No? Okay, all right.
Hi, my name is Margie Urachi. I reside at 13318 Wildwood Road. And I just want to be very clear that the perception of a lot of people that I've talked to, because there's a big concern out there that the redistricting actually follow what it is supposed to do. And that is to be, the redistricting should be adjusted because of population, not to affect the outcome of any, any election, not to favor a special interest group or other entities. And it shouldn't be, it's supposed to minimally impact the boundaries so that it's fair and it follows the guidelines. And there's a lot of people out there that have concerns and for whatever reason, they're not comfortable coming up and talking about it or emailing. But, you know, if you look at the prior page where it lists the statutory requirements and the County Board directives, make minimal changes, even the population, that should be able, the best map should be able to come forward to do that and to be fair and to have people, the County Commissioners vote in such a manner that it is fair and it is for the best interest of the constituents. Yet, the perception out there is that this might not be what is happening. So I just want everyone to know that each Commissioner respectfully is being watched on how they vote for this. And there's talk of people possibly running against Commissioners depending on how, if their perception is that this isn't a fair vote as far as having, following the guidelines. That's all I have to say.
Thank you, Margie.
Mr. Chair, Commissioners, thank you. Emily Rivera, seven twenty-five Seventeenth Street Northwest, Bemidji. I reside within the city of Bemidji and understand from information available that one of the discussions of the Commission is the potential to divide the city into up to four districts. In addition to the process of redistricting, following the Secretary of State's recommendation, the compact contiguous, keeping in mind that either sitting Commissioners not taking into account their, where they reside, all of those things are very, very critical. But I would like to speak to this idea of multiple or adding additional districts within the city. I would not be in support of that. I feel that the county deserves to have more equal representation. I think over, over representing the city of Bemidji is really to a detriment of the remaining cities, communities, and rural areas in our county. I would hope that as you are looking at proposed maps and so forth, that you would consider the requirement of making as few changes as possible that you had as a Board set as a goal. And I guess with that, that would be my comment. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Thank you, Emily. Are there any others wishing to speak on the matter? All right, I'll ask again, are there any others that are wishing to speak on the matter of the redistricting of Commissioner Districts? All right. Seeing none, we will close the public hearing for the redistricting of Commissioner Districts. All right. We will carry on to item number nine, County Administrator Report.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. As the Administrator's report, I'll just give you a couple of brief updates. First of all, continue to be working on three leases for the county. As you know, we lease lots of different property on the county to others and are, I'm currently working on three of those leases right now. Hope to have those in front of you here in the next six or eight weeks or so. Wanted to just follow up again on our OSHA voluntary inspection. As you might know, I think I mentioned that we invited OSHA to come and review some of our facilities. Been about six years since we've done that. It's a voluntary inspection that we asked them to do just to make sure that we're still remaining current and compliant on regulations and that sort of thing. We haven't received the final report on their recent visit since it was so, well, it was just last week. But essentially, initial reports indicate that we did very well. They were initially impressed about the way we keep our facilities, the policies and procedures that we have. There are a couple of areas that we'll be making some modest improvements on and some policies that we'll be adjusting. Little bit of work that we need to do over at the Armory and Shooting Range, but that will all be wrapped up here in the next thirty to sixty days. OSHA at that point will come out, have another look just to make sure that we followed through on those commitments. But we're very complimentary of the overall safety program and the training that's offered through the safety program. And we're impressed, you know, by the way the county is operating with regard to OSHA rules. So we're pleased to hear about that. Thought you'd want to hear about that as well. We also have, I had a conversation with Christina Regus from the city of Black Duck and we're going to be working on developing somewhat of a, I guess we call it a communications partnership meeting or series of meetings where we'll try to bring in some emergency leaders from the city of Black Duck and also neighboring townships to have a conversation in regards to communications and emergency response and those kinds of things in an effort to try to identify some areas where we can better get synergies and improve our inner workings together. So hopefully in the next couple of weeks or over the next month or so, we'll have that kind of pulled together. If anything consequential comes as a result of that, certainly let you know at this point in time. Think it's just really more about listening to one another and giving opportunity, platform to learn about the needs and demands and improve any situations that result from that. I think you've heard a couple of times this evening, you know, we're gearing up for budget for next year. That's going to be a challenge. You know that we have eight union negotiation contracts or contracts to negotiate this year. The Personnel Committee will begin a meeting on April the twelfth and will continue to meet until we work through all of those issues. At some point, we'll be coming to you to discuss approach and, and strategy going forward, issues, concerns, those kinds of things. So stay tuned for that, probably next thirty to sixty days, I'm hoping. And then some important dates for you to just consider. One is in regards to tonight's conversation about redistricting. The information that you've heard in the public hearing tonight, along with all sorts of information that you'd like to bring or discuss or have looked at, we'll be able to do at the special commission meeting, which has been scheduled for April the twelfth at three PM. Just wanted to remind you of that. That's important, next Tuesday, it's not a normal, regular commission meeting. But we do have a couple hours preserved there where we can entertain all sorts of different scenarios and ideas and that sort of thing. We publicly noticed that meeting as, as we talked about at our last meeting. So you probably don't want to miss that. And then.
I have a question there, Mr. Chair. We, we had on, on next Tuesday's special meeting.
Correct.
We had, we had made that as a placeholder in case the city, at least that's my, my recollection. We, we had that as a placeholder in case the city radically changed their maps so that we would have an ability to react to having to then redo ours. Do we, do we still need to have that meeting?
Well, I guess, I think that's up for the Board. If you, if you all want to have a meeting to discuss the maps, then that meeting would be a great place to do that. Keep in mind that the schedule is such that a, a final decision needs to be made two weeks from this evening. So if you want to have discussions tonight, you certainly could do that. If you'd rather have discussions at that special meeting, which we have announced, we could cancel it if you feel as a group you'd like to do that. But I guess our understanding was that you all wanted to meet and discuss maps, roll up your sleeves, look at different versions and all of that.
I, I, Mr. Chair, I, I kind of thought that was, you know, public hearing, redistricting, hear public input, show some maps, discuss that, kind of get some input, see how things are going.
Sure.
And if we could come up with consensus, we didn't need the April twelfth special.
Okay.
Because the outcome of the city meeting last night was, I sat in the meeting for the whole three hours and there doesn't appear to be any movement. They are going to adopt that map and we're pretty sure, like very, very sure that it's gonna go the way it's on the table right now.
That was my, yeah, that was my understanding.
So that pretty much solidifies our maps, right?
Right, that's, that's what I thought and that's.
We were going to discuss that tonight and get everybody's input and discuss that. And that, that was what I would thought, but I just figured I didn't. And then not have to meet next Tuesday.
Yeah, or we can just, we can do it on the nineteenth as well, or, you know.
That's pushing it for the last second, though.
That's true, that's true, yeah. Well, I mean, it will be on the, it will be on the agenda on the nineteenth and I imagine that we will have a discussion, but.
And, and my hopes were, if everybody remembers what I said, was the meeting tonight, we could discuss. And if we came up with consensus, then we don't need an April twelfth meeting and we, we then act formally on it in two weeks from tonight. Right?
Yeah, yeah.
Well, I didn't know why we closed the public hearing. Or we did close the public hearing because we heard everybody. So is it still possible to have additional discussion before we move on to Commissioners' business items, legislative lobbying and so forth?
Yep, absolutely, you can do that. You just want to bring that item back up because it's on your agenda already. You're certainly free to have that conversation this evening. And however far you'd like to get, if you want to adopt a map tonight, for example, you could certainly do it, you were in regular session. You've heard the public hearing, that's what was required. You could adopt a map this evening if you'd like, forego the, the sort of meeting that. I guess we understood the meeting was going to happen on the twelfth, but it doesn't have to, you could.
If, if you recall, we had, we had talked about it, but then we said, well, maybe we don't need it. And then I think, and I, my memory is a Gemini, like, well, let's just go ahead and, and call it so that we, so that we don't, because if we found out tonight that we needed to have the public, to need to have a, a, a new meeting, then we'd be in trouble for notice. So we did this in, in the abundance of caution, knowing that if we, if we needed to, we could cancel it. Right? Okay, I just want to, I just want to make sure that we're.
Yep, and that's, that's good enough. So we'll make a notice to cancel it. I'm getting the sense that that's what you'd like to do, so we won't. Yeah, I guess we'll wait for your conversation.
Right, right, let's, let's see.
Exactly. We'll see how far you get tonight. And then, lastly, just wanted to update you that several of Department Heads will be meeting with staff from Representative Fishbaugh's office on Thursday, April fourteenth, just kind of a check-in. We'll share some projects that, you know, we'd like to have federal support for as we have done in the past, nothing really new or different. But if you have something that you'd like for us to carry on your behalf, just let us know before that meeting and we'll make sure that we do that. That's all I had for you on the Administrator's update. If you'd like to bring back up the other topic, you're certainly free to do that.
All right, thanks, Tom, for your report. But before we, we move on, oftentimes I think of future work meeting topics as, as, as we go on with our meeting. But I guess maybe we, we probably heard a report in the past about, you know, some of the challenges that we're facing with staffing and staffing shortages. You know, I guess maybe an update on how that is coming along. You know, I know a few departments presented that or brought that issue up this evening. And I'm kind, you know, kind of curious to. And I'm kind, you know, kind of curious to know, you know, what we're doing to try to recruit and retain and things like that. So if there's an opportunity sometime, maybe, maybe in May, or whenever we find time on the agenda, I would appreciate that update. So about next, next week's meeting? Are we on? We are?
Well, what I suggest, Mr. Chair, is to have Jody Treat present some maps to the, to the board and say, here's our options. Here's what we could do. Here's what we can do. Here's how we would do it and open it up for discussion amongst us. See if we can find consensus.
Tonight?
Yep. And if not, that's why we held up April twelve.
Well, I heard, I heard three yeses, so that's a, that's a majority.
Because there have been maps on our, if I may, Mr. Chair, there have been maps on our county website, county website illustrating possibilities and the redistricting process and how that may all go.
That is correct. I think our, our plan with conceptual maps, we used city averages for that first set of maps were put on the county website after our last meeting. So they were up on March seventeenth. Our point, so at, at the meeting, the March first meeting, when you all got together with different ideas and requested different or had different plots, we originally came up with three maps. I'll go through those three first. This proposal one is all the city wards are represented by three commissioner districts. This is shifting a population of just under three thousand and shifting five total wards. So once this does comply with the ten percent rule and once that ten percent rule is applied, it will have Commissioner Districts two, three and five run for election this next year. And you will recall, I believe it's Commissioner Districts one and two are, I'm sorry, one and three are up for election in a regular rotation. So this would, this would add Districts two and five to that as well.
So District four wouldn't be up for?
Correct. Proposal two was splitting the city wards two amongst two commissioner districts. This shifts the population of twelve thousand four hundred and thirteen ward township ships combined. And this would, because of, because of shifting that total population would cause a, an election required for all commissioner districts. The third proposal would be splitting the city wards by four commissioner districts. This has a total population shift of five thousand five hundred and seventy or a total of ten townships and wards. This would cause elections in Districts two, three, four and five. After those three proposals were derived from that March first meeting, there were some questions and concerns. So we got together as a committee and to answer those questions and concerns, Proposal four was developed. This was based on Proposal two, where all city wards were split by two commissioner districts, but does not require a commissioner to have to run in election against another commissioner. In addition to Districts one and three having to run in their normal rotation, this proposal would require an election in Districts two and five. Population shift is twenty thousand seven hundred and ninety-three. Total wards and townships shifting are eighteen. And again, Districts one, two, three and five would run for election. Proposal five is based on Proposal one, where all city wards are split three ways, but equalizes the high and low population. You recall, one of the guiding principles was to have as closely to equal as possible and then not more than that ten percent. So this more closely aligns that population per district. In addition to Districts one and three having to run their normal rotation, this proposal would require election in Districts two and five. Total population shift would be just under four thousand with a total of eight townships and wards, switching to a different commissioner district. The sixth proposal that we provided was when this proposal was created, it was based on city of Bemidji averages. And at that point with city of Bemidji averages, it was in compliance. After the city of Bemidji released their preliminary map, this is no longer in compliant. You'll see the note on the bottom. District five population ends up being twenty persons short of the minimum population required to be compliant with the ten percent rule. So I think as, maybe as you discuss, or if you want me to go back to different proposals, different maps, on the bottom left-hand side, it shows the population per district. That is one of the guiding principles. So I can go back to different maps, move back and forth. We are, I have to say, we were under the impression that we were going to be meeting next week with a more interactive process. So at this point, we're not prepared to create new maps for you tonight. But if you have other suggestions, we can definitely put those together, either back at the office tomorrow or next Tuesday, we can get together and, and create maps instantly on the fly as you're requesting different options.
Mr. Chair, this map, in order to make this one compliant, to me, I looked at the numbers and it would be really easy by just moving Liberty Township out of District three and putting it in District five. And that would make all of the districts be very equitable in the population. And it would also make the District three, which has a really growing township, and it echoes as growing a lot. Instead of having that be almost at the max that it could be at, it would take a significant amount out of that so that it would allow some room for growth. So I would like to see a map that basically is this exact map just moves Liberty into District five.
Isn't that Proposal five, doesn't that do kind of the same thing?
I believe this map is less moving and does not require District four. I don't, I don't know about the other one, if that actually was correct, that it didn't require District four to rerun. Oh, Brian and Hagel, I think that's really close as far as whether that allows, requires District four to rerun.
One of the things that I had liked, when I looked at Proposal five, was the fact that we were all close to the same number of folks that we were representing. And I agree with you that Echoes is going to be growing. And I'm not sure what's going to happen in the northern township area, whether they will be less or more. But if there's, you know, it's possible it could get smaller. So I think in that issue, I like, I like that they were closer to each other.
They actually would be as close as this, Mr. Anderson, if we move extremely close. If we modify six by just moving Liberty, the numbers become extremely close to this, if not better.
So what you're saying?
Their population standpoint.
Right.
It's very, very.
Would you, I don't have number six in my, or five in my, in my, in front of me. So can you change the, or could I just look at that really quick?
So there is six, Commissioner Olson, it just.
Oh, thank you.
If you just move Liberty into District five, that takes care of it takes District three, it takes Liberty out of District three, so it pulls ten thousand down. And you push the eighty-three hundred in District five back up to get them just above, again, by definition, roughly nine thousand per.
Thanks.
And, and see, the thing, the thing with that is, I thought when we were discussing this, that we want to try to get away from that C shape. And if we moved Liberty to five, I mean, it still would create that C shape that we're.
More of an L shape, but yeah.
Well, I mean, with, with the last.
Even population, though.
That even as we can. And our trouble is, Mr. Chair, the trouble is, unlike some other redistricting plans, we have to follow a township. So it's all or nothing. You know, we can't take County Road so-and-so and slice Township in half, which quite honestly could make this process a lot easier if we could do that. And we'd get rid of more of those jogs type. So in a county situation, the, the curve ball that we're throwing is, yeah, we want it as smooth and contiguous as possible in a district, but we have to take all or nothing. And townships can't touch like this.
Corner to corner, yeah.
They have to be that way, full overlap. So Proposal six, turning it into Proposal seven because of the, the direction that the city goes. If we make a Proposal seven, simply by saying Liberty Township into District five, Liberty Township out of District three, the populations are very, very equitable, divided between the five districts.
Mr. Chair, the issue that I have with, with, I guess, whatever, if you want to call that seven and six and five, just at first glance is you're, you're, you're mixing the most urban parts of, of the county with some of the most rural parts of the county. And I don't think that that's something that we should encourage. We should get away from that and try and have more common communities in districts, you know.
But we just heard tonight from constituent that said, didn't want the city calling one commissioner.
No, I don't think that that's what anyone said. To do not create four districts that touch the city because then you have the potential of having four Bemidji residents that are county commissioners. I think is what the, the point was there. Or that, I mean, I think what we want, like, like the guidelines say, is we want, we want compact war districts. And I, I think that having, having the very rural and very urban in the same district is not a good, is not a best practice. We want.
I'm curious.
Because, because they have different needs, different concerns, you know, the concern of someone living in the city is different than someone that's living in Alaska Township or in some of the more rural parts of the, of the, of the county.
I view it all as equal population and they're all, all constituents. They're all members of the county.
But that's.
And redistricting, you shouldn't consider what, where they live. Remember we said, addresses aren't important.
Our addresses aren't important. Our addresses aren't important. That's.
That's gerrymandering. When you start doing that.
What is, gerrymandering is when you split a constituency for, for, you know, what I am saying is not gerrymandering. What I'm saying is having tight districts that have people inside them that have shared interests, that are a shared community. So we don't have huge disparity or diversities of, of the, of locations that they're in. I mean, if, if you're, if you're in very rural Alaska Township, what you're looking for from the county, what your positions are, what, what your concerns are, are going to be much different from someone living just up the street here in town.
So who has the wards in Proposal six? Well, District five would continue having Ward three.
Right.
And District one would continue having Ward five and the other, and yeah, and then the other three, which are currently Commissioner Olson's district would all be, that would be the only wards in that district. He would lose Echoes Township from his district.
Which is going to happen in every scenario.
Yeah, well, just about.
Two would be three wards of the city.
Right. Which it should accomplish, mostly what your goal is.
I mean, I think that that's going to happen. There is going to be a three-ward district.
Yes.
However, we, however, we slice.
Remember our city wards, the, at the perfect average population, it happens to be a really easily number, it's three thousand eighty-nine. So if a county board seat is targeting nine thousand, then you can see that three wards of the city would make a district, a county district number. And it just seems practical to put Echoes, the, the District two that used to be Echoes and two townships or two wards in city, to now create a new district, number two, that is what you said.
Sorry, it is currently District two is, is three city wards and Echoes. Yeah, so it's wildly out.
And the population has grown.
Right, it's wildly out of, out of, right, right.
So Echoes is the least common denominator of slicing that off from three wards of the city to make a district that's as close to nine thousand population, which is hard. So I, number seven, do you have another one, Commissioner?
Well, to me, I think the, the obvious map to me is, is Proposal number two. Because that has the urban centers of Northern Township, two and, two and three. And then District two would be four, one and five. And then you have a district, I forget, District three is kind of the, the larger townships. And then you have two solidly rural districts in, in, in four and, and one.
Commissioner Olson, one of our goals is supposed to be minimal change. And if you look at it in front of us here, we've got that, that changes twelve thousand four hundred people in the, in our county. That's over a quarter of our county. But that changes affects thirteen townships and wards. That's, that's, that's more than minimal change.
If you look at how it's breaking up the, the county and breaking up the residents, it's breaking them up into kind of like groups. You know, to me, that is the most equitable.
That's, that's not the goal, though. The goal is minimal change and even populations and, and that, I don't see that as what this has accomplished, is almost as much change as you could possibly get.
It is the best map that, that we have.
No, I'm not in favor of it.
It also happens to put me into another district. And maybe that's why you might think it's the best map.
That's.
All right.
Thank you.
And.
Jim, I, I really take personal insult to that. If you're trying to say that I am, I am, I am looking at what is the best for the county. And for you to, for you to allude that is, is really unfair and it's just, it's inappropriate.
But for you to say that this is the best map read is inappropriate.
Why?
It has a twelve thousand four hundred population shift.
When you look at who, how it is breaking down and who it is representing, you know, how it, how it creates more common interest. Well, yeah, so we disagree. That doesn't mean that I'm morally corrupted, that I'm trying to get you out of office. That is not what I'm saying.
I didn't say that.
Yes, you did.
I did not.
Yes, you did.
I mean, I, I think your reference to, to your.
You, you have no right to say what my motives are. No right to do that.
Commissioner Olson.
I've never done that to you.
Just did. You just suggested it.
I just suggested your motives. I did not just suggest your motives. I totally hate being unfair.
I'm not going to allow, allow this conversation to continue. We are here to discuss the proposed maps. We are not here to insult each other. We are here to try to work together for the benefit of our county. So if you guys want to take, take issue with, with what you guys are having disagreements about, now is not the time. If we can, let's continue to discuss the proposals in front of us.
Well, I'll tell you my second favorite map, Mr. Chair, is, is number, and it's the same reasons. It's the same reasons. It's Proposal number one. It's their tight. It's their tight, they're tight. Districts. They're, they're still, they're, it's still more or less accomplishing what I, what are, to me are the, are the important goals.
My, my problem with proposal one is that you have a radical range from population. On a very low end for District Five and on a way high end for District Three. And District Three, having Echols in it at this point, would be growing and immediately, very soon would become way over. The population that the state statutes are intended to have, Commissioner Olson. So that's why I do not like number one, and that's why I prefer either number five or the revised number six, which we call number seven. For, you know, having very even populations, very minimal change, very compact districts. And not affecting, you know, nearly the number of constituents that proposal two or some of these other ones are.
Well, number one is way better because of shift in population. Township ward changes are less. Remember the guiding requirements are, try to keep minimal change. Ward District Five, District One, District, they all look similar. To what they do now, and we are accomplishing, so number one is, is a very, very good possibility. In keeping the shift down, but. As Commissioner Gosbig said, you got eighty-four hundred on the bottom end, ten thousand one hundred thirty on the top end, and you're trying to get to a nine thousand. Roughly average population.
So what, what, what does minimal change really mean? I mean, is it, is it minimal change for, for how the district looks, or is it the, the population, I guess I'm.
I think it means all of that. Number of townships or wards. How much shift in the population, how many wards and township changes you make.
Mister Chair.
Well, and. Hearing from, from discussions, you know, I think my, my. Preference on, on proposal isn't, isn't the favorite. But I would, I would favor proposal two as well. And it has nothing to do with. With, with anything other than, I think it looks. More, more compact, there doesn't look to be any gerrymandering. I just. That's what I support. Well, I mean, and the good thing is we, we all have our individual votes that we can, we can support and not just. Jody?
I won't vote for proposal two.
Yes.
You had a comment?
Yes, I, I'm just going to clarify the minimal change comment. That is not one of the state's guiding principles, that is one of the items that you as a board requested attributing on, on, or March first.
Can you tell us, are, are having common interest communities included, kept together in, in, in units, is that, is that a state guideline?
It's not one of the guiding principles, it is one of the considerations. Along with population trends, any potential annexations. Keeping those common interest groups together. Again, those are, those weren't, those were recommendations, they were not the guiding principles.
So it would, I mean, regardless, it would probably make sense to have Northern and Ward Three together because they're of the annexation that's going on. Because then from our perspective, there's zero net change.
With the same concept with City of Wilton and Echols.
And Echols, exactly.
Once you see where I'm coming from on proposal one, you know, having Echols be in District Three and it's starting off at ten thousand one hundred and some. Or ten thousand some already, that, that just would be unfair to having that much right on the top end of. The maximum number of people.
Yeah, yeah, I see, I, I understand what you're saying, I guess it's just a matter of what, of what we're prioritizing, you know, and I think it's, it's. Clear that my, my, what my priority is different than, than, than yours.
But then if you compromise somewhere in the five and seven range. Similar to one, but. It's the population more.
Would change, so the, if we move Liberty Township on proposal six. I, I took the map there and deducted it, so District Three would then have ninety-two hundred and seventy-one people. Or constituents, and District Five would have nine thousand forty-seven, so all of them would have over nine thousand, somewhere just over nine thousand. And they would be very compact and contiguous. With, with the exception of, if we wanted to make it even more equitable, we could move Alaska Township into District Four. And that wouldn't be as much of a L shape as Commissioner Sumner mentioned, however, then. I believe that would force Commissioner Sumner into also running for reelection this year, so.
And Commissioner Gosbig, I have no issue with, with running for reelection, you know, that's not a concern for me. My concern is making sure that we do what's right for our county.
If we added Alaska Township into Commissioner Sumner's area, then that would make the, the numbers even more equitable. And, and more for future growth as well.
Well, I, I think we probably should, you know, continue this conversation at a special meeting next week. And I don't think we're going to have any type of consensus tonight, or, or. Or anything of, of that nature, but I'm curious to know Commissioner Anderson. On your position.
When I came in here tonight, I was either for proposal two or proposal five. But. And the main reason is I really did want to have somewhat equitable number of. People in each of our districts. And. I. Still feel that's a pretty important part of it.
So two or five. I'm hearing from Commissioner Luca Chick. Six, seven.
One works. Next, we have taken off the table, we converted six into number seven.
But just so I'm clear on number seven, and you said taking Liberty out and putting it with.
With the, with District Five.
And the numbers get very, very close.
And, and if Commissioner Sumner wanted Alaska Township in his. Then.
Well, I mean, quite honestly, I wouldn't mind Neibish Roosevelt Maple and.
That kind of discussion where you say, what does this commissioner want in his district, that is gerrymandering, that is the definition of gerrymandering, is saying, I want these districts.
Is why I said that.
Make the population more even.
Yeah, and to make the population more even, what, what that would do, it would create.
It was your phrasing.
More, it would create more room for growth in District Three as well. Because it would take a hundred ninety-five more out of District Three, knowing that Echols Township is likely to grow considerably. And it would make District Four ninety-two seventy. Instead, so it would bump District Four up a little bit, and District Four has lost some population, I believe, so. That would be the reasoning for it.
Commissioner Gosbig, can you remind me of, of which these proposals? You, you support more?
Five and seven.
Five and seven.
And I would suggest, Mister Chair, that we look at maybe ranking, you know, if we get. An accurate depiction of proposal seven, so to speak, sent out to us and we come with our, our. Maybe top three priorities at the next meeting and maybe.
And that's what I'm trying to, I'm, I'm writing down what, what proposals that I've heard. And maybe come back next Tuesday with. One, two, five and seven or whatever, and just kind of hash it out over the.
Yeah.
Special meeting next week. And now, that's my hope that. We don't come back with, with proposal sixteen, seventeen and eighteen next week. Because from what I hear, you know, we got, we have support proposal one, support for proposal two. And. Five and seven.
Can I just get a, a little clarification on what number seven is? It's moving Liberty. From District Three to Five. And also moving Alaska from Three to Four.
I believe that's, that's what.
Well, first it was just Liberty.
It was first, it was just Liberty, but, but then Commissioner Sumner said he didn't care about. Being forced to rerun and.
Because that is another requirement, is trying to minimize elections.
No, it's not. It is not.
I don't know about that, but.
Fundamentally not, I know, I heard you say that today on the radio, and I think it's a, it's a fundamental misunderstanding.
Our, our statute, our statutory requirements don't say, you know, that we, that, that's part of. What we're not trying to do, you know, but I mean.
I think it just makes the District Three a little more compact and, and. Just an L shape basically, instead of a C shape like it used to be, or like it currently is.
And I, and I clearly recall that was one of our hopes. You know, was, was to get rid of the, the C shape in, in District Three. But that is my suggestion, is, is bring these maps to next week, I don't think we're gonna come to any sort, sort of agreement this evening. And I'm all, I'm all for, I guess, further discussion if, if you guys want to, but.
Okay, so an additional point of clarification. For next Tuesday's meeting, we will bring to discuss maps, proposals, one, two, five. Revised number six into number seven. Changing Liberty from District Three to District Five. And changing Alaska from District Three to District Four. And you do not need us to bring the software to create other proposals.
All right. Thank you, Jody.
Yes.
So we will continue on to Commissioners' business items, Commissioner Gosbig. With legislative lobbying and Commissioners' report.
Nothing special for legislative and lobbying. For Commissioners' reports, had our Fair Board meeting and I think there's been some people that are concerned that, yes, we are going to have a rodeo this year, so. HRDC meeting, we did confirm the election or the hiring, I should say, of Executive Director Naomi Carlson. And that was actually a promotion from within, and so congratulations to Naomi on taking the Executive Director role there. I attended Donell Hogan's retirement from the Sheriff Department, she was actually a classmate of mine in school, and it was fun to send her off and. Into the retirement land, and I had a Mississippi Headwaters Board meeting as well, but nothing, nothing to report there necessarily, thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Olson.
I have nothing, Mister Chair.
Commissioner Anderson. Commissioner Wookich. And for myself, I just want to recognize and remind my colleagues here that it is. Is it national county? Some sort of national county appreciation thing. But other than that, no other, no other comments. Return.